Oh, the special June 6th meeting of Bastrop Planning and Zoning Commission to Order. Will you call the roll, Madam Secretary?
Debbie Moore.
Here.
Patrick Connell.
Here.
Cynthia Meyer.
Here.
Matthew Lassen.
Here.
Richard Gartman.
Here.
Cheryl Lee. Greg Sherry.
Here.
Pablo Serna.
Here.
Tom Dawson.
Here.
We have a forum. Second item on the agenda is citizen comments. This time three-minute comments will be taken from the audience on any topic. Rather than read all of this good stuff, since we have a lot of things to talk about, is there anyone here who wishes to make comments on anything? If not, I think it would be appropriate, skip on down the road. So, item three, individual, items for individual consideration. Three A is discussion in the Bastrop building block, B three code. Mr. Jones. I have a question for you before you get started with whatever you're gonna do.
I do too. Where's my clicker?
And one thing we need to do before we get out of here is, not only agenda, but we didn't approve the minutes from the previous meeting because we didn't have a forum. So, we need to approve the minute. I don't know if we can do it, since it's not on the agenda, so just hold it off and we'll get it at the end of June, okay?
Yeah.
I have a question for you.
Yes, ma'am.
What is your goal for this evening?
My goal...
I know you have time constraints and you have goals that you want to meet and do things by certain, but I've had some of the, some of the commission members ask me, what are we doing and what is the goal of us being here to talk about stuff?
Yeah, so let me, I think I can answer that through some of the slides I prepared.
Okay.
So, we're here to discuss the code. I hope that's not a shock to any of you tonight.
Not, not, not...
Yes, so this was something that, that we discussed at the joint council workshop, or the joint workshop with council. And so, council gave you some goals and objectives to look at the codes. And some of those discussion items included these things, which were development process flow chart, applications and checklist, permitted use charts, parking regulations, community value nuisances, tree preservation, accessory dwelling units, street sections, and signage. So, those are the real things that they all asked you as a, as a recommending body to go and dive into these things. Use our policy statement as a guideline, but then make recommendations on what you think the code should look like or contemplate when you make your recommendations to council. So, that's kind of why we're here. The basics of the code, like the draft code, what it is today and what it's not. So, essentially, the pole, or the, the codes that you have in front of you are essentially like the bookends, all right, they're the poles. It's the north and the south pole. It's the playbook. Anything that's in that book, you can do by right. You don't have to worry about coming before you all or city council. You bring your plan to staff. As long as you're fulfilling the applications and checklist and things of that nature, staff would have the ability to approve those plans. So, it gives that, it's something that developers like to see. You know, it's kind of like a by-right development playbook, if you will. And so, that's what the code is. It's perfectly fine that everything is not in the code. And if it's not in the code, that's great. That just means they get to come all and have a conversation with you and city council if they want to do it. So, it doesn't mean that it's all-inclusive. It just means if it's not in there, they get to have, come, have, come and have a talk with you all. It's also gonna be reviewed annually. That was something that was very important. That policy statement will be reviewed annually by city council and make sure that it's still living and breathing and, and doing what we need the code to do to accomplish the outcomes that this community wants to see. And so, it's not something that we'll adopt and we'll take a look at another 10 years from the road. We'll actually look at this document annually and make sure that it's doing what it's supposed to be doing. So, I put the phrase up there, y'all will use it, and we'll tweak it. Y'all go over here and use it some more, and we'll tweak it some more. So, it truly is a living, breathing document, and it's not gonna be perfect. Because we never stop learning, we never stop improving, and that's okay. So, I think that kind of covered that. And also, there's just some uncertainty right now with the legislature. There's certain bills like House Bill 2439. And what that does is it, it strips the local authority for you all to regulate building materials. So, if it's an allowable building material in the, in the international codes, we have to allow it, period. That's exterior sheathing, everything. So, you could have, you know, in a flood zone, for example, or in a fire-prone area, 100%, you know, house made out of wood, and there's literally nothing you could do about it. You can't do anything to control, control the aesthetics in certain areas. So, you know, when you're trying to build creative places and unique places, it doesn't allow us to do that. It takes a local control away and, and puts it at the state. It's getting a little bit of pushback from municipalities. We actually put out a press release about it because we, we fully believe that, that that control should be with the local municipality, not with a elected official who might represent people in El Paso or South Padre Island. Why do they know what's better for Bastrop? And we've experienced the floods, the complex fires, the Hurricane Harvey. We have all these things coming at us, and we think it should be the citizens who elect you all and city council who, who determines that. But that, that's something that could completely, you know, change the feel of this code. And something we also do not have at this point is a technical manual. So, that would include like your, the subdivision requirements, per se, or different things that are more like construction-related that will come in the, in the technical manual. And we do not have that yet. So, kind of, this, this was for kind of last meeting, but I'll go ahead and go through it. So, I think you all know, we've done some extensive work to this point. A lot has gone into this. This is our public input that we've done. So, starting back in October, we had a walking tour and bike tour of downtown. We had a mobility tour on the 26th of November. We also had a development forum. So, we literally invited everybody who's building permits with us, who develops with us, the, the area house builders association. We invited them to the convention center, sat them down, said, "This is where we think we're going. What do y'all think?" It was very interactive. I think we got some good feedback that we were able to build into the, into the codes, into the draft code. So, that was helpful. We had a two-day design rodeo, and then we actually had a two-day code rodeo where we spent the entire two days receiving community input and feedback, had a lot of table talks. You know, we, we broke out into group discussions, and again, we took all of that feedback from the community and inserted it into the draft code. So, that was very helpful. We had the transportation and drainage rodeo on April 10th, and then we had our last code rodeo at the, at the Opera House on May 9th. So, the intent in the intro of the code, and this is kind of just a little bit of a recap of, of what y'all discussed at your joint meeting, but really, it's to lay it out there, why are we doing this? And that's to achieve fiscal sustainability through land use regulations that are geographically sensitive to Bastrop and walkable. I, I think that's the common theme. And then, we talked a little bit about character districts. So, we're building neighborhoods, not subdivisions. And the, the basis behind these, and I think it was, it was explained pretty well, is that they really were like geographically informed. Like, we didn't go out and make up like, you know, this is the, you know, T4 transect, right? We, we called it what it was. It's the bluffs. It's the lost pines. It's, you know, the cattlemen. It's, you know, some of that. And it, we really looked at the land, looked at the natural patterns of the different neighborhoods, and tried to build the character districts around those. And this will really become your, your future land use plan, the character districts. That's really what this is in essence. And there were a couple of questions at the last meeting, at the joint work session, regarding, you know, kind of what this looks like. If I'm a P3, what am I gonna be in the future? And this was a chart that Simple City put together, and it really does a good job of explaining what is in the each character district by place type today. So, a good example on this one is like the downtown area, right? You have 29% P3, 21% P4, 50% P5, right, and 5% vacant. It's not gonna take a lot of time to deliberate what we think is there, because it's already there.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes, ma'am, absolutely.
Where's the bluffs?
Where's the bluffs?
I mean, there are some names on here. I have no idea where they are.
Yeah, the bluffs is gonna be kind of down by the Economic Development Park. Thank you. Does this work? That's it right there. So, it's kind of on that, the part of town where there's that natural fall down to the river. So, you have the bluff up top, and then it flows down to the river. So, we tried to, you know, come up with a name that signified that.
There's some others. I have no idea where they are, but I dug this.
Okay. We can point them out. I think this was included in what you all got, so that map. Hopefully, the one that you have is, is more legible than my example up here. It's hard to kind of fit all of it on one slide. But, you know, you have the, the legend here. So, if you have any questions, just kind of refer to the character district legend and then locate them on the map. But if you have any specific questions, we'd be happy to help you out there.
Matt, at some point, are, are the districts gonna be broken down more for P and Z?
More for P and Z?
So, I went to the workshops, most of them, I think, that just council had.
Yes.
Which most of us were not in attendance.
Mm-hmm.
So, I saw a little bit more of the discussion on it, the details on it, the ins and outs of the different districts, which is, whereas these guys may not have, which is why some questions have been posed as to why it was named this, or how did it come up with this, or why, what does this entail? Because most P and Z was not there for that.
Right. So, we're gonna get you the link to all those PowerPoint presentations. Hopefully, that will, you know, if you spend some time with that, that could help you out. But really, the answer is, we didn't want them just to be, you know, some color on a map. We wanted them to truly reflect either the history of the land, or the geography of the land, or something like that. So, that's where the place types were, were born. Came from that. And it, you know, it ranged from North Town to the, the new, new district, and now I'm speaking, I know it's not the new district, but New Edition. So, so that's what it was. There is no magic elixir to it. It was just what made sense. What was the history of the property? And then, you know, a lot of it had to do with the geography, like the river districts, for example. It just, it's along the river. So, that's, that's what it got named.
Have a question?
Yes.
How do we add new districts, character districts, as Bastrop expands?
As Bastrop expands? Yeah, so, it's a great question. So, the areas in the wide and the ETJ, you know, if you have something come in adjacent to this, for example, you might just expand that character district, or you might have a new one. You know, if it doesn't make sense to expand to the adjacent character district, then you can just come up with a new one. And that, that would be perfectly fine.
Yeah, I guess I'm just understanding the process. I understand how you came up with the current districts based on what's there now, maybe some historical context.
Yeah.
Which I think is a great idea, but as Bastrop goes, goes forward, is there, what's the mechanism in place?
Yeah, so if somebody wanted to come in and annex some property, right, that's not in the, the city today. So, today, it's not in the city. We don't regulate it. We don't have land use authority on it. But if they wanted to come in, then they would bring us a plan, and then at that point, we could determine whether or not it made sense to incorporate it into an adjacent character district, or at that point, come up with a new character district. Good question, though. Hey, Colin, how do I get off of the Zoom mode? Thank you, sir. All right, so yeah, now that I have my, my, a highlighter there. So, if you looked at downtown, right, you come across this chart. There's no P1 in downtown, no P2, 29% P3, 21% P4, 50% P5, and that just leaves about 5% vacancy. All right, so when we come through and do the rezoning, it'll be rezoned like to like, all right? If you're, if you're a SF7 today, you would get a P3 place type when we do the, the citywide rezoning. And that, so...
How will this rezoning in the city, especially the areas that's covered by form-based codes? How will that change?
So, the area by the form-based code will be rezoned to, I think, is downtown district, and then parts of it will be historic district. But the, the code, the, the B3 codes, the analysis that was done, the DNA of it, was done for downtown. So, realistically, not much difference will be from the form-based code. It'll be...
If it goes out Chestnut toward 95, and those are covered, is that still gonna be considered downtown?
No. It'll be in a different character district, but you will have the different place types that'll be contemplated. So, the place types are really more, are more similar to a form-based code than a Euclidean zoning. So, they're more flexible like the form-based code is. It talks more about building placement than use. And so, really, it's kind of a blended district also. But the idea and the whole, you know, thought process behind the building Bastrop codes were to analyze, do the DNA of downtown Bastrop, and extrapolate the things that worked there and kind of integrate those into the rest of the city. It doesn't mean we're gonna have 19 different downtowns. We won't. But the things that have worked here for 187 years will translate those into all the place types. Hence, you get the walkability, you get the gridded street network that, with the updated transportation plan and those types of things. But the form-based code designation will go away, but it'll still function as, as a form-based code, if that makes sense. It'll just be called something different. Any other questions on that?
Let me just, I, I think now might be a good point to ask you or bring it up. As far as the place types and changing from a P3 to a P4, neighborhood of the mix, I've talked to a realtor, an appraiser, and an attorney to ask him how that could affect appraisals on property that might be changed to, even though it's not an individual. I know they have to come to have it changed for us like they do now. But the answer that I got was, it's not to say it won't affect appraisals around them when the place types are changed. So, my concern is, I just want to make sure that when we do the place types, we're not placing people out of the area that they've lived in forever.
And that's why we're doing a like-for-like translation. I think that's important to keep, keep hitting on. We're not coming in and upzoning a bunch of property. If you're an SF7 today, it'll be a like-to-like zoning to the P3, which is exclusively residential. So, to that, I, I don't see the difference from today. As far as the appraisals and such, because it'll be the, the same process today. So, if you want to change from a P3 to a P4, that's great, but they have to have a come, come have a conversation with you and council, exactly as they do today. We're just calling it something else. So, instead of going from a SF7 to like a community retail, you'll go from a P3 to a P4, for example. So, same process, same local government code that we're under today. We're just calling it something different. So, this is, well, this is what I've been talking about for the past 10 minutes, but it's the, so the place types will become your zoning, right? So, you can think when somebody asks for a zoning request, they'll be asking to go from like a P1 to a P3, or a P3 to a P5. So, that would be the request. So, you can think of the place types like your zoning districts. And like I've said, when the rezoning takes place, it'll be a like-to-like transition. Now, where that doesn't hold true is like areas that are vacant along, well, it does hold true because there's a lot of vacant land along 71, for example. It's undeveloped. Today, it has a commercial designation. We're just gonna continue that commercial designation. So, public versus private, this is where one of our conversation pieces for tonight comes up. We're gonna be regulating by nuisance, and then we're also gonna dictate how they interact with the street frontage. So, this is kind of that form-based code element, that we care how you interact with the public realm, how it feels when you walk down the street, what kind of sidewalks you might have, where your building is placed on a lot. So, Matt Lewis went into some great detail on this at the joint work session, but where it's critically important for us, for P and Z, is you all are gonna discuss nuisances, or at least the public nuisances. And so, we'll get to that here in a second. So, this was kind of a schedule that we put together, staff did, based off of recommendations that council wanted you all to look at. So, today is obviously the first of those meetings. They wanted you to look at the permitted use charts, community value nuisances, and accessory dwelling units. So, we've also broken these down where we thought that they made sense on, on our remaining meetings, based off council's desire to meet on July 9th and have that joint work session, again, where you all could make recommendations to them for those codes. And then, they would come back before, before you for a public hearing later on this year. Do, y'all have any input on this? You, you think this is a reason...
That's great. Could we get a copy of that?
Absolutely.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, I think it's actually in your staff report. Yes, ma'am. You bet. Does that look good for everybody? We thought it made sense, but we're up for, okay, sounds good. All right, so tonight, the items that we have for discussion are permitted use charts. So, those were provided to you in your packet, and what you have are the, the straight zoning districts, as well as the form-based code, our community value nuisances. And so, everyone can agree that a noise can be a nuisance.
I have just one question really quick.
Absolutely.
Bit of a digression, I apologize, but I'm reading over council's mission statement on writing the code. I'll just read it so that we all have it in mind, just to create a fiscally sustainable community through land use regulations that are authentically Bastrop and geographically sensitive. As I read that, just as far as this being our overall framework for what we're really doing, I assume that authentically at Bastrop kind of goes into this DNA that Matt Lewis took out and making things look kind of like Bastrop's always looked. And clearly, geographically sensitive. We want to pay attention to drainage ways and the way the topography of the land and trees and things that might be around.
You got it.
But speaking to the first point, you know, fiscally sustainable, really big topic there.
Yep.
Specifically, how does a city create fiscal sustainability? Clearly, if we have very little infrastructure to take care of, we don't need to collect as much tax to take care of that. We create a lot of infrastructure. We need to collect more tax to take care of that. Are we primarily talking about increasing density within the downtown area in order to create tax dollars? Or what, what are the ways the council had really identified to make this city stand on its own two feet? I mean, are we, you know, I know we've talked at times, do we have to have two sidewalks going down a road? If one on one side's perfectly fine, people can cross the road and use it and all that.
Yes.
And so, if you could just take a few moments and just, because I think this is gonna be a huge topic where we're gonna be discussing a lot of minutia, but at the same time, we're gonna be creating code that either will or will not create fiscal sustainability of the city. And so, I don't know if there's some identified things of exactly how we're gonna accomplish this.
Yeah. Great question. So, yes, it's a, it's a complex answer, but, but the answer is really, when you base your codes off that policy statement, you know certain things are not fiscally sustainable. Like a bunch of cul-de-sac streets, for example. You have infrastructure run, and then it dead-ends. There's no loop system. That's wasted cost on, on water and wastewater. It's also a wasted cost on maintaining a street. Larger lots, for example, again, not fiscally sustainable, right? Because you're, you're limiting the amount of taxpayers on a street. And one of the big things was, was introducing that grid network pattern back into the city. And so, instead of having these massive collectors and arterials that are extremely expensive to maintain, do nothing for, you know, creating a sense or a place that people want to come and be. It centers itself on the automobile and nothing else, right? So, all it really does is drive up traffic because it's just a, it's a free ticket for people to drive everywhere. So, introducing the grid pattern back in where it does make sense. Now, it is interrupted by the river. It's interrupted by topography. It's interrupted by some of those things, but in general, a grid system makes work, makes sense. We saw that when Virginity did the fiscal impact analysis for the city. When he took a look at it, the only area of town essentially that was net positive was downtown. It's on a grid system. Everywhere else was not. It was losing money. And so, when you take those things into consideration, you know that a lot of cul-de-sacs is not fiscally sustainable, so that's off the table. We're not even gonna discuss it, right? Because we, we know that that does not work. We know that it needs to be walkable, so the sidewalks are important. How you feel when you walk down a street is important. So, that's where building type and placement comes into consideration. That's where the pattern book comes into consideration, because you want it to feel nice when you're walking down. Has to be inviting for people to get out and walk. So, those are the types of things. And also, like the accessory dwelling units, like we're talking about tonight. It allows people to use their property if they choose to in more flexible ways. Maybe that's generating income through a rental flat in the back. Maybe that's providing a place for an aging parent, or a, you know, a sibling, or a, a son or daughter to live. So, having that flexibility in the code and allowing people to use their property like that is more fiscally sustainable, sustainable, because you're having a more attainable housing for your workforce, so they don't have to drive to and from. And it's allowing people maybe to stay in that neighborhood longer than they could have if, if, if they don't have that possibility. We also looked at not regulating lot size. So, right now, some of our minimum lot sizes are like 10,000 square feet. And if you don't do that, you have to come before us and get a planned development district. Well, all that really does is get you a lot of square lots with square houses, setback 25 feet, and it's just not the most, it's not the greatest development pattern. So, we know that doesn't work. So, by introducing different lot patterns and housing types into these areas similar to downtown, we think works from a fiscal sustainability standpoint, so that's what we built into the code. And then, the street design, that had a lot to do with it. So, it's all these things kind of intertwined that led to that fiscal sustainability. Also, allowing, like in the P4, for example, like in a, in a transitioning neighborhood or in some areas in the P4, you can have a commercial application if it looks like a house. We have them all downtown. We have the Antique Gallery. There's bail bonds. There's attorney's offices, and these things function in what used to be an old house, but today's code doesn't allow for that. So, again, by allowing for that, it opens up the door for, for commerce. It might lower costs for somebody looking to get into like an entrepreneur. It might lower entry cost into that. And so, all of those things kind of lend themselves to fiscal sustainability. So, some of these things that, that we're talking about are more nitty-gritty, but the big picture is that when all this is put together, Matt Lewis talked about pedestrian sheds and having more live-work-play opportunities, where today, we just separate them, right? You even have to build a fence in between somebody who puts a dentist office next to a home. And we still may see that, but at least we allow for them to integrate with one another where it makes sense, so long as it looks like each other. So, if they play nice and it doesn't create a nuisance, then why do we care, I guess? And so, by opening that up and being more flexible in the uses, will naturally lend itself to more fiscal sustainability.
Matt, I'd like to make a comment about, you talked about our road plannings and the sustainability about walking to work and shopping. I, I think that's a great idea, but I think the reality of it is, we are going to be a bedroom community. Most of the people who live here are going to drive to Austin. So, that means we're gonna have cars. We've gotta get out of our neighborhoods efficiently, onto collectors, onto 71, so we can all go to Austin and work.
And I'll, yeah...
That may not be what we like, but I think that's the reality. We're gonna have to deal with that, and we may have to make some compromises in there, because we are gonna have to deal with traffic in those conditions, and it's not pretty. But if we don't address it, then long-term, it's just gonna come back to us.
So, by allowing people to, to provide that grid pattern, you actually tremendously improve traffic circulation, because you're not forcing 900 residential units out of one point, make them sit at a light. They'll actually have 16 different options to get to where they need to go. So, again, to that point, the transportation plan takes care of traffic. So, but, good question.
Yes, no, absolutely. I just, I just want to make sure that, because I believe at that point, you know, supremely, I just want to make sure that it's, it's an open topic for us, as well as you reminding us that if there's anything we're talking about that's pushing things one way or another, that's definitely one of the chief points that we discuss.
No, I think it's an excellent point. I should have put a slide in there with it.
Not be shy about it, I guess, of saying...
No, no, not at all. And I think that as we go through this... No, no, we got a lot to talk about. No, I should have added a slide in here that, that had that... No, I should have added a slide in here that had that statement on there, and I failed to do that. But I think that's a great thing to always keep in mind. And as we work through these discussions, I think when we're taking a look at all this, how is this authentic to Bastrop? How is it geographically sensitive? And is it fiscal... Is it lend itself to fiscal sustainability? And if the answer is no, we need to shift gears for a minute and take a look at that. But excellent point, and we definitely need to keep that in mind as we work through this.
And one other thing is, does it have any effect on the comprehensive plan?
Yes. And we will definitely be coming in and updating that as we work ourselves through this. And a big part of that is a future land use plan. So as these zoning regulations take shape, we will be bringing in a comprehensive future land use plan amendment as a companion item to the zoning, because to your point, they do have to reflect each other. So when we get to that point of the final adoption, we'll be bringing that update to the future land use plan with the zoning. But good, very good point.
I have one question on permitted uses. So we're moving more towards not really stipulating, like you saw there, seven pages full of uses for what it is currently.
Yeah, 290 uses.
Okay. It was a bunch, too, just, you know, a couple of pages. And is there going to be a situation where we would have some kind of compatibility setbacks to look at, to consider?
I don't think setbacks is the answer. We can take a look at that, but I would argue that the nuisances themselves, more than a setback, would take care of it. So, you know, if it's a noise issue, or a smell, or a dust particulation, or anything like that, we're going to regulate that. And we're going to set what defines a nuisance based off that. And so if you're having a cabinet resurfacing business, it's going to have certain sound regulations, it's going to have, you know, even vibrations. And if you can't tell what it is, does it really matter whether it's five-foot setback or 15-foot setback? Because maybe it's a cabinet shop today, but it might be a shoe, you know, peddler or something like that in the future. And so that wouldn't require the same setback, but what we care greatly about is that nuisance. Does that make sense?
It does. I'm thinking of... Those are easy ones to kind of understand. What if it's kind of a fine thing, like maybe it's a daycare or something like that? And we're next to neighbors that live there, or they have an Airbnb. I'm just off the top of my head. And what do we have that's not a nuisance to have children around, but I imagine that...
It can be. I have three of them, so...
So I'm just thinking that backyard.
I beg to differ.
Some places might would have, you know, some setback or compatibility setbacks.
You know, and that's an excellent point. So to that point, I think we're talking about permitted uses here. Child daycares, are there some places where those may not make sense? And like, for instance, in a P3 strictly neighborhood residential, are daycares in appropriate use? That's a question.
I know where one is in a P3 right now in our neighborhood, and it's great, but I do know that it can get a little loud. But I think I'm all for the mix of the use. I'm just wondering how we would handle without a tool.
So P4 is a district that's primarily residential, but has some, you know, P3 in it. So I guess the question is, if you're zone P3, would it be more appropriate for you to come, talk to you and council if I wanted to open up a daycare there? So maybe they're allowed in P4, but strictly in P3, that's something you wouldn't allow. Does that make sense? Y'all have any thoughts on it?
Well, there are certain times of the day when, during hopefully naptime, it's just a building here that has children on the inside. But when they're out playing and screeching and... I know I've had to stop a few times when a ball got thrown over a fence. It's something that we would need to consider, I would think.
I do have a thought on it. So some places, and I'm just going to reference Austin, would have a compatibility setback, and that's why they have so many uses. Another, we don't want to get into that level of 290, but maybe something in there that says compatibility setback may be put in place. And so they would back off the amount of how close you could get to those property lines by a certain distance that could be regulated by the width of your lot or something like that. So there's a math problem we could work through if we're... In my case, where I'm trying to help a client, and we would say, well, this is really what you can yield out of that. If there's no rules in there, I know you talk about right to build. It could be... We do a lot of, you know, I'm just thinking, professionals do a lot of work, only to find out that that's not going to be allowed.
Yeah, and that's why we want to have these conversations today and not, you know, six months from now when we have the codes and we have somebody come in. Because that separation requirement, is that from the primary building? Or is that from play equipment? Is that from, you know, where does that come into play?
While I give you the example, it could be surface period. So the setback could act, would have to be green space, and so it would stop. It wouldn't be a building setback. It could just be anything, a playground, any structured, built structure of any kind. If it's up against a different kind of use, like a multifamily or residential or a commercial, then there's this little setback just to accommodate for nuisance like you talked about.
Yeah.
Actually, Matt, kind of a little bit to the point you were kind of discussing here. I brought this up last week, different heights of fence. Today, we do six-foot, five-foot... Would an eight-foot fence solve this issue? We're now, we've got a different option to deal with this issue. Does the fence stop noise, does it stop fall? I don't know. But it's an option that I think we ought to put on the table and consider. Maybe that's a better one than, oh, doing more setbacks or not allowing it.
Okay.
Matt, I guess I'm slightly confused. I mean, I know they kind of... I thought, I was under the impression that the purpose is we're going to regulate, you know, nuisance, noise, so on and so forth, rather than specific uses. But, I mean, right off the bat, it seems like we're getting into specific uses and what can and can't be used.
Yeah.
I mean, specifically in this case, I mean, P3 moving to P4 in a neighborhood, the neighborhood's going to be informed of someone's decision to put a daycare there.
That's correct.
And they're going to show up, and they're either going to say yes or no. And I think that would bear a lot of weight on our board and council as far as allowing it, at which point fences could be discussed. But, you know, at the same time, the point is to decrease the barriers to starting a business. And if we're talking about mandatory setbacks of green space and building fences and stuff, I mean, again, this is just making someone spend money before they can go make money. And so, I mean, it kind of feels to me like the way the code's kind of generally laid out, you know, we can't code in an answer to this, other than just when someone brings it up, you know, we discuss it, and then it's just a matter of consistency from time to time, you know, when the next person asks, the next person asks. So I guess, I mean, I know this may just be a little microcosm of why we need to have a, you know, some of these discussions, but, I mean, I... Yeah, I guess I'm just kind of confused if we're actually trying to figure out how we're going to deal with daycares in residential areas, or if we're just using this as a larger kind of idea. If we're using for a larger idea, it's kind of lost.
I think we're using it as a springboard. You're right, but it is a good conversation to have to kind of get to where we're going. Because I think the question then becomes, how do you deal with it? If we think it might be a problem, we need to figure out what to do with that? So maybe the answer, instead of whether it's a daycare or whether it's this, if you're going to have a commercial application in a P3 district or a P4 district, whatever, you know, we can talk about it, with any outside activity, then you have to come and have a conversation and talk about, well, what are you going to do to mitigate that?
Just real quick, do you have a more formal intro into permitted uses? I feel like we're kind of dancing around it, but we haven't, like, moved into that topic, or we... Is that...
No. I thought we dove right into it. I don't have anything else.
Okay, that's fine. I'm just making sure.
No, this is it.
Solid transition that you have to make on.
Yeah, yeah, because what they talked about at the council meeting was things like rendering plans, right? We know those we don't want. So we can more or less have a prohibited uses, then let's list out 290 permitted uses. So I think that's the springboard conversation until where I think we would like to get is, what are things that we know are not permitted? And those will just not be allowed in P3 through P1. And then are there certain things where we want you to come have a conversation with P&amp;Z and council and notify the public? We need to know that, and we can write that regulation into the code. Like, where is it appropriate for somebody to have a... To come before you all and have a conversation? And what is just going to be allowed? So if I have a daycare, for instance, and I have five kids and I keep them in my house, is that a problem? If I have 10 kids and I have an outdoor play area, you know, and provide facilities outside, is that something you think regulates a bigger conversation? And maybe it's not a daycare, maybe it's, you know, something else. But, you know, that would be the conversational piece.
Matt, I think you're on the right track of... There may be certain types of activities that we're just going to say, no, don't even come talk to us, we won't consider them. And that'll be a real short list of just ban stuff. But everything else is, it's possible. Bring it to us and let's have the discussion. This way, it leaves it open for people to get creative, what works, what doesn't. Because what may work on one block may not work on the next block. But let's put it on the table and see if it works. And this also pulls the community in, so they're going to talk to each other versus, what are you doing this for? We don't have harsh rules, we're going to be flexible, we're going to talk to you.
Yeah, and I struggle with that, and the code does too, because we want to be flexible. And like we've talked about before, if I'm operating an office and it looks like a home next door to you, and I'm not creating a nuisance by sound, smell, odor, vibration, these things, why do we care? Because if you open that up for discussion, I'm going to come up here, I'm going to say, oh, I love that idea, just not next door to me. Just not next door to me. And that depletes the purpose of the entire code. So that's what we cannot do, because that goes outside of bounds of our fiscal sustainability. So that's what we just can't do.
Do you guys have a list of already existing prohibited uses that we can start with and work through?
I think you can turn to the back page of your permitted use charts and get a pretty good idea. But it doesn't really have to be that specific, even if it's an industrialized warehousing type, you can just say those things are not permitted in P1 through P4. Where they make sense is probably the more... Some of them just don't make sense. But again, if you want to have an industrial or warehousing type business, come and have a conversation with us.
So perhaps I'm the only one confused, and I'm okay with that. So I feel like we have on the screen that we're talking that, you know, we've got three things we're trying to, you know, discuss. And I feel like we're jumping all over the place.
Okay.
So I feel like we're talking... Are we having 50,000-foot view conversations tonight? Or are we trying to be a little more specific with...
We need to be specific, because you're going to be making a recommendation to council.
Right, so that's... I guess that's where I'm saying, if you had more like a formal transition into like each section that we're going through, because like I said, I think we're all asking questions.
No, the idea is to do away with the permitted use charts. Like, that's the idea. We don't care what you do. We will have nuisance regulations that regulate that, and that's how we're going to do it. And so if I can't see it, smell it, hear it, taste it, why do I care?
Right.
But like the heavy industrial uses might only be appropriate in the EC, the employment centers, okay? So we worked with the EDC to come up with several sites in town where, you know, an industrial, more industrial manufacturing type use might go. And so they would have to have that employment center and then have... Come and have a conversation with y'all.
So let me... So because we are kind of just throwing a bunch of stuff up against the wall. So can we streamline this conversation a little bit by first understanding what it is you're asking of us? Are you asking us to identify what would be considered a nuisance in P1, P2, P3, P4?
Nope. Right now, we're talking about permitted uses.
Are you asking us to give you examples of... Because like Patrick's saying, we've gone from nuisances to... So where are we in our conversation right now?
Well, right now, we're really kind of talking about permitted uses. And I'm telling you that nuisances will control a lot of those use hesitations or...
Okay, so are you asking us to give you some examples of what could be considered a nuisance?
I'm asking y'all to have a conversation of if there are any uses that you can think of that might not be able to be regulated by a nuisance standard. So this is a discussion for you all to give us some policy guidance to then go back and give to council. With the idea that we're getting away from permitted uses and focusing on form and regulation through nuisance.
Strip clubs, sex toy sale types of things.
So some of these are...
Smoke shops. When and if marijuana becomes illegal, those types of things. I mean, when I look at prohibited uses, what do we not want to see in town? All right, well, we don't want to see strip clubs, we don't want to see sex toys being sold on the corner, we don't want to see, you know, smoke shops everywhere. So that's why I'm struggling with... I know you're saying we're having this general conversation about permitted uses, and we're trying to get away from those and control those things with nuisance items. So to me, those are things where like, okay, if all those things I just listed, they don't have a smell, they don't have a taste, they don't create noise, but I don't want a strip club across the street from the school. So, you know, so are those what we're talking about, things that we can't regulate via nuisance classifications?
Yes.
Okay, very good. Those are my four. Throw those out there.
And some of these, keep in mind, are protected through... You can't just flat-out say no.
Right.
But we've dealt with that internally.
Matt, I just wanted to clarify. I was just thinking that where it's a gray area, if something's brought before us, and I'm thinking this in terms of some down, it may be me or maybe somebody else, they're having this brought before them, and it's a gray area. It's not any of the things that you listed off, but it may be something that could be... It sounds like it's an all-or-nothing discussion. From what I read, it's like it's a nuisance, so you can't do it. But if I'm trying to... If they're trying to do something, and they just want to know, well, what can be done? And it's pretty open-ended, it looks like at this point, because there really is... It's really open-ended, in my opinion. And so they're going to think they can do it, all the way to the edges. But if you're saying, well, that may not be the case.
Right.
And I think if I were a developer or someone that's wanting to do something, I'd want to know, maybe I may be impacted by some level of compatibility setback, because it's not an all-or-nothing, but it could be something. So I'm asking for, maybe there's some language put into here that says that it's not all-or-nothing. It can be, you know, just give them some warning, that's all.
Matt, is this also where we discuss what we have now? And I don't know exactly the footage, but alcohol sales close to a school or a church or something like that?
Yeah, it's regulated by state.
So that's already... Good. Now, they... But there are variances, right, that they can get?
There are variances for like brew houses and things like that, so this conditional use permits. We process those today. So if that's something you want to continue to see, that's something we need to put in here.
Matt?
Thank you.
Matt, at one point with, I think one of the meetings with council, it was discussed, and I think this is kind of what we're talking about as well, that we were going to have a conversation about community values and morals.
Yeah.
Which I kind of believe that that's what a lot of this has to do with, just given, you know, where you can and cannot perhaps sell marijuana in the future, where sex shops could be, so on and so forth. So are we going to be charged with like developing a moral mission statement as well? Like, or how do you develop a public moral?
No, I think, so the... Yeah, that went more to the community value nuisances, like loitering, you know, do we want to control loitering?
Curfews.
Curfews, camping in the public, things like that. So those are kind of your more, you know... It's not a nuisance to everybody. Somebody, you know, standing on the street corner doesn't bother everybody. As a community, how do we want to treat it? That's the community value.
Because it seems like a lot of these fit into that as well. I mean, I think most people are going to agree in this community that, yeah, you know, a sex shop on the corner is not something we want to see, but again, that's not everybody.
Sure.
You know, and so I guess, I don't know, just trying to grapple with where to... How you make kind of a general statement saying, you can't do these four things that Patrick...
You know, and so I guess, I don't know, just trying to grapple with where to, how you make kind of a, a general statement saying, you can't do these four things that Patrick does and want to see, which great, I agree with him.
Just examples, I'm just throwing it out there.
Exactly, yeah. But you know, there's, there's a thousand more out there that, you know, are, we just haven't thought of. And so just kind of the guiding principle for when something new does come down, it's like, well, you know, our mission statement says, we want a wholesome community for our children to grow up in a, you know, drug free environment or whatever it is, you know. But, you know, it's kind of getting a little bit more grandiose.
I think everybody can agree to that and I think our, we have a pretty good police department that, that helps us take care of those types of things.
Yeah, so I just don't know if that someone would need this statement for us as a guiding principle down the road when?
No, I think generally that's pretty well understood.
But you can't even make a, in my opinion, you can't make a blanket statement like that because once marijuana becomes legal and you can use it recreationally, is it a banned drug? If it's legal, I mean, it's a slippery slope and it's nothing you can make real blanket statements about.
So I just, I, I want to make sure we're, we're moving forward. So I feel like most, most of these things are gonna be, I think we're gonna spend more time talking about community value nuisances. Cause that's, sounds what, what's gonna regulate a lot, a lot more of this. So I guess I would charge everybody with, let's look at these, these five zones that we have. And are, are there anything that we don't want to see period in any of these five areas?
Let me put a little, let me give you a little bit of boundary to play there. Right now, P three and under is residential. All right, so even your P three zone cannot have any type of commercial in it, period. If somebody wants to have a daycare or a attorney's office, they get to come have a conversation with y'all first. So you're really looking at P four and P five.
And, and so as far as permitted use charts and desirable, undesirables and prohibited use, are there things that we absolutely don't want to see in P four or P five?
Which we've talked about, smoke fumes, or have we, smoke fumes?
But those will be, those will be nuisance items, those aren't part of the, that's not part of the first section, that's what I'm saying. The, the first section, I think, is things that, that, they're not gonna be there, period. I mean, if, if, if you want that, you have to come before and get permission to do that. So what are those things that by default will not be allowed in P four and P five, right?
That's correct.
And then once we can work through some of that stuff, then we can move on to nuisance stuff, which I think will be a bulk of the conversation on how we regulate daycare next to houses, next to smoke shops and whatever else.
One thing I do want to get some input on though, because I think it's an important conversation, is in P four, where it contemplates a blend of commercial and residential. What is y'all's tolerance for outdoor activities on, within the P four? So if I'm in a house and I can operate a business is in P four, as long as it looks like a house. What level of activity are y'all okay with occurring outside? Are, are we perfectly fine with saying, well, I really don't care what you're doing outside, as long as it doesn't violate, violate the odor, noise and, and light nuisances?
Are you talking more like foot traffic?
No, not foot traffic.
Say outside, you mean like what am I literally doing outside of the building?
Correct.
I got you.
Correct.
Outdoor eating, maybe place tables?
Could be, if I have a little, you know, deli or, you know, something like that that I opened up, I might have a picnic table out front for my, you know, patrons to sit at. And so long as they're not creating a nuisance.
Loud music?
Loud music is a nuisance that we'll regulate.
I would, I mean, I would easily say under those circumstances that anything should be allowed, you know, because you're right, it's not the nuisance. I mean, you think about loud music, even daycare with children being loud outside, someone wanting to open a carpentry shop and run a bunch of power tools outside or welding. Those are all gonna be regulated through some kind of noise and you sure may make allowances for something at some point, but, I mean, I, I mean, I think you're right.
By, by default or industrial uses already prohibited in P four and P five?
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, uh, no, we'd have to have that conversation.
So in my opinion, in P four, in you, in you, in your, what would be your definition of industrial? For us and for everybody watching?
Manufacturing, warehousing, fabrication, uh, things like that. I would think all fall under there. So the things that are in our permitted use chart today under industrial would, wrong button, would fall under there. Now, there's a place for those and that's the employment center.
So, so it would be my opinion that industrial has no place in P four for sure. And then I would say in P five, it's probably limited. So, but the, but being limited in P five, I think, means that it's prohibited, but you have to come and ask. So I, my, my recommendation is industrial is prohibited in P four and P five, period. And then if they want something, they want to do that, they have to come and get permission to do that.
Get like an employment center?
Yeah, in employment center, good to go. You wanna, you know, work on cars and whatnot in a, in a, in a mixed, mixed use area, you're gonna have to get permission. You wanna, you know, interrupt foot traffic in a, you know, in a, in a P five more area?
What if I'm working on cars inside the building, like a paint shop?
I, I would, I would still say no, because with, with, anything industrial usually requires some type of storage to go with it, there's usually an outdoor component to it. And I just don't see a P four, P five, you know, scenario where you have those. Not saying that you can't, but for P four, P five, my recommendation is industrial is prohibited by default, requires permission. Put it in the EC.
But your definition of industrial includes like muffler shops and things like that?
Uh, yeah, I guess that's what I'd say, so if you, if you want those, it's not a no, it's just come and have a conversation with us.
And that's in P five and, so you don't want them contemplated in P five? You just want them, if you want that, you have to come get an EC zoning and come have a conversation.
Does it have to, you have to change the zoning or can you get a, you can get like a CUP board?
You could do a CUP in a P five, that's.
I would say it'd be a CUP, not a.
In P five?
How do y'all feel?
P five is, okay, P five is commercial.
P five is your core, it's our most intensive district outside of the, of the employment center. So P five would be, uh, there is a little bit of P five downtown, there's P five along seventy one, uh, for example, so that's our most intensive district.
I look at it like this, P, P five, we're, we're trying, we're pushing on the walkability portion, right? People walking up and down the street and enjoying the sidewalk and everything else. If you want an industrial use, okay, in that area, I think that, that needs to be considered. Because I think just throwing an industrial use right in the middle of foot traffic and everything else could cut, could create a problem.
Okay.
So regardless of what type of industrials, muffler shop, painting cars, manufacturing something, shipping things, I.
Might make sense, but you want them to come have a conversation with you first.
Correct.
Let me ask you a question just pertaining to that, let's think about Chestnut Street the way it is right now. What is this, uh, commercial on Chestnut here where we are?
Most of it is, yeah.
So if, would that be a P five then that we're gonna be thinking that this might be?
Yes, I believe it's P five.
Two automotive places already existing. Let's, don't start zoning out things that are already working is what I'm, I'm really concerned about.
It's not a, it's not a no, it's that you gotta have, gotta come have a conversation.
Right, but I think there's, there's different levels of, of that. Because a car mechanic shop, like you said, those have been there for years, never bothered anybody, no one's complained about it. But if someone was to try to put a plastic factory plant right there on the corner of Bacon and Chestnut. Then that, to me, is where you get into hazardous type of industrial type of jobs. So I'm in agreement, I think we need to find some type of balance. Because I don't think someone should, if it's a P, if it's a P five area and they want to open a mechanic shop, I don't think somebody should have to come. That was the whole purpose of doing it this way, to kind of lessen the restrictions on that. So maybe, um, when you say employment center, it, so I think we should identify what within, where would the industrial locations be? Because when I think more about this, what we're talking about here, my, my concern is more of the odors, the hazards to the community, the water, anything that will seep into the water. Things of that nature, right? Which to me gets into your bigger businesses.
It does, but, yes, but they, they're, they're not appropriate everywhere. But there's a need for them, we need them in the community, they drive jobs, they drive all kinds of things. And so when the EDC looked at the first go around, they said, where's our area for employment? Where's our industrial, where's our manufacturing gonna go? So that's why this employment center character district was created.
So I just, I just want to read something. P five core, higher density mixture of building types that accommodate retail, offices, row houses and apartments. It has a tight network of streets with wide sidewalks, steady street tree plantings and buildings set close to the sidewalks. P five is a highly walkable area. A continuous line of buildings is critical to define the public frontage and allow for visibility, uh, visible activity along the street edge. Zero need for industrial in that by default, in my opinion, based on that definition. There's, I can't think of.
My argument's not industrial on that. My argument is we're getting, we're being extremely critical and we're getting, we're nitpicking certain things that I don't think we even need to consider.
But we're, my, my recommendation is industrial, period, not auto body shops and muffler shops and, you know, that stuff's okay, but manufacturing's not. I'm just saying, all industrial, because, because in my opinion, with this definition here, okay? It doesn't talk about industrial, it doesn't talk about, it talks about retail, which is not industrial, offices, row houses and apartments. Lots of walking, wide sidewalks, okay? So in a, in an, and, and buildings that are, have a continuous frontage, so driveways for things like, you know, where you're moving cars back and forth. That doesn't fit with this unless it's gonna be in the back, which would take up, you know, which would kind of mess with the density desire. You know, having things like this, I think, you know, people don't want to walk past industrial things, no matter what they are. So I'm not saying that you can't have it, I'm just saying that if you're gonna, you're gonna come into this P five core based on this definition, you gotta come and get permission. And let the, let the neighbors have a say so in whether or not your existence is going to mess with.
Manufacturing and, and things like that are very typically lumped into industrial. I will say automotive is more lumped into retail and service, typically.
I would even say then, that if that's the case, then for those particular things would still need to get, get permission. Because I'm, I'm reading this definition and this to me does not strike, this strikes me as like, you know, a, a downtown core city block. Where you have continuous sidewalks, continuous buildings, that's what this definition reads to me. Anyway, that's, that's, it's just my recommendation because we're, we're kind of getting hung up on the permitted uses and I think we need to move along to the, the nuisances. Because that's where I think the core of this is gonna.
Sure. Can you come, we're recording, so if you could.
I mean, maybe the consideration would be to regulate by number of employees. Because let's say, for example, that you do drop your car off to get the oil changed. And then you could walk downtown and have something to eat. Like if you look at those body, the auto shops that are downtown now, so you might want to regulate it by employ, employee size. So they start getting really large, then it would become maybe more industrial, but the smaller specialty shops, it seems like you might want those in that P five.
You kind of run into a spot where it's like you, you prohibit expansion at that point. Because if I want to continue to grow, then I gotta, it seems very detail oriented, I think we're trying to be broad, right? Right?
Patrick, I think you've kind of opened the door here. Maybe in our definition between P five and P employment center, we've got something missing. Because employment center is, okay, is, is that your big box retailers, is that your big industrial plants? Well, what about small ones, are those employment centers? When do you go from being a small business to being an employment center? And maybe that's where this thing between P five and employment center isn't clear.
Yeah, I think employment center is not specific to one business necessarily, it's an area where those types of businesses would be allowed.
Those areas over there.
Maybe it's the P five definition that needs to be amended. Because to, to y'all's point, if, if we can regulate it through a nuisance, why do you, why do you care?
Yeah, so we, we may need to tune the P five definition, we'll make it a little clearer, this from Patrick brought up, there may be some ambiguities in there, we don't want to have to do anything wrong.
So I guess my follow up question would be is, are there any prohibited uses that anybody thinks shouldn't be in any of these districts that are already allowed? Because if there's not, then we can move on to the nuisance section and get past where we're at.
Biochem plants.
Was that a serious statement?
I, I would like to put it in that category because there's possibility somebody could, but it'd probably end up more in employment center or industrial area, but, yeah.
So you're saying, again, an industrial type use, you don't want in a P five?
I don't think if, if somebody wants to come in here and put some kind of chemical processing plant here, we probably want to have a real long discussion. We want that type of, of industry in our city.
I got, just a thought on that, because you brought it up, is, maybe, there doesn't seem to be language, at least what I'm seeing. Because I, I think the intent is to have this reuse, you know, with the building types so that when they build something, it can change use over time. And it's in that area and we want to allow those uses, so we're not building constantly sprawling out and further and further out. So I, I agree with the form based idea, I'm just trying to understand, uh, well, maybe that's what we're trying to understand. Without getting into the minutia of what, what's allowed, what isn't, I hear nuisance. It doesn't seem to be that there's this, um, um, way to guide people that are thinking about changing, you know, maybe it was, um, a shoe shop at one time. They want a lot of heavy traffic, but now it's gonna go turn into some kind of pharmacy or a compounding pharmacy of some kind. So there may be some hazardous material.
So that'll be dealt with through the international building codes. So that's a life safety issue that we'll deal with, construction standards boards meeting about it right now, we'll continue to meet through the end of the year. All that kind of stuff, so we, we, we care greatly about that, but that's regulated through the, the I codes. So if you're putting in a distillery, for example, you have to retrofit that building to accommodate that use. But if it's safe and it doesn't create a nuisance, do you care if it's a, a, a winery or if it's a, you know, pharmacy?
I would even recommend, um, maybe expanding on the employment center definition too. Because to most people, employment center sounds like a hiring agency for jobs, not so much businesses. So it's maybe tweak the name, I would suggest.
Do you have any suggestions?
Industrial park. Because if it's, if that's where we want to primarily put our, our, because I don't consider Home Depot an industrial business. Maybe it is technically, I don't, I consider it a retail business. So when we get into bringing jobs in the bounce drop and as far as manufacturing things, things of those nature. Then we would be looking more in an industrial type of, of area or district. And if the employment, but if you want to leave the name employment center, then I think that that should be defined a little bit better as to what types of, uh, businesses would go in an employment center.
So do you have any, do y'all have any suggestions, like industry zone, I mean?
I would say to that, I mean, the employment center though, as it, as it reads, is kind of there as a catchall for just things that don't fit anywhere else.
That's correct.
I mean, it's not so much it's been designed as a character area, it's more just like, well, none of this stuff fits anywhere else. You know, like you said, I mean, Home Depot's not your plastics manufacturing plant, you know, they are, they're a different kind of places. But, I mean, we can, it feels like there is another branch there that could be, or another definition that could be inserted. But speak to something to me, when we get time, if you would. A certain amount of this, of P one through, or P five, P four is defined by, you know, our style guide, a character map. And a certain amount of business is gonna be just regulated out based on the form base aspect of what the area is. And, I mean, what, I mean, clearly large scale production isn't gonna fit into a house or, you know, a house on Chestnut that's been converted into, you know, something, a wood shop or something. And so I guess, I mean, is a lot of what we're talking about gonna be just naturally spit out of the, of the P five area just because it doesn't fit? Because our style guide, which I know council's trying to decide if style guide is part of the code or just an idea?
So it doesn't mean it'll be spit out, it just means they have to have, come have a conversation. So if it doesn't fit the development standards, doesn't mean it's a no, means they have to come have a conversation with you and council about it.
It's kind of what Patrick's been saying about just.
Right.
CUP, conditional use.
I'd like to suppose halfway houses are prohibited in four or five. Or I'm sorry, not prohibited, need a CUP specifically.
Yeah, I think, we'll, we'll take a look at that, so those types of uses.
That's how our current code reads and I would agree that if you're gonna put a halfway house, which by its definition is inside a house, it's, it could be inside a neighborhood and stuff like that. If you're gonna do that, you should have to come and let your neighbors have a say so.
Yeah, and again, there's a list of about fifteen things that are.
Already there?
Are regulated through the state or some other, and our attorney will have a, a very good conversation about this.
They're in the current ones, I'd like to keep those, so if it's not on the list, we would want to add it.
Got it.
Anybody disagree?
Well, I actually, you kind of opened the door in halfway. There's a group homes. Where would those fall out?
So I will say, just because it's in our current code does not necessarily mean it's legal. I'll just caveat that.
We should find out if.
Yeah, so that's why we're gonna, we'll have the discussion with legal on those different items, so.
If we can, we should for that. Not a no. You just gotta come have a question. You just gotta come, come ask.
So I, I'd like to get back to the, the bigger, bigger picture. Because I think Patrick is leaning one way, a couple of you are leaning the other. Um, so I'd kind of like to get somewhat of a consensus so we can make a recommendation. You know, um, automobile uses, if they're can, can be regulated through nuisance, are we going to regulate them?
I, I personally don't, if we, a lot of this, we've talked about authentic vast drop. Well, I've been in vast drop for forty-eight years. And authentic vast drop, if we're going to be specific to automobiles, you can go to Joe Vlo down the road to get a cheap oil change versus me taking my car to Honda. And it didn't bother anybody. It's when you get into stacks of cars in their yard that where it, it becomes a problem. But, um, but to be, to me, again, that's a retail. Where, to me, when you're talking about really big nuisance-type thing, you're getting manufacturing, odors in the air and you're worried about your water, things of those natures. But, uh, Speed Zone or whatever, that little auto pot, auto thing, I'm glad it's right there. I've never used it. My son has, but I'd rather go there and right down the road from my house, Jiffy Lube is in the middle of, um, a retail shopping center. You know what I'm saying? Those, you see that stuff all the time and they're not considered industrials. They're more considered retail. So I would say, no.
Okay.
Could that be regulated as a nuisance?
Yes, ma'am.
You could say in P three, you can't, uh, work on more than one car at a time or something.
No, it won't be allowed in P three, period.
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. P four, P four, you know, can't work on more than two cars at a time.
They could only be there if it looks like a home.
Right.
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 So.
But could, could a nuisance not be something to the effect of no more than two cars not owned by the, by the owner or the leasing of the property?
You can make that a, a value statement, but, uh.
I'm just, I'm just saying, that's where, that's where we get into, how do you regulate auto? If I, you know, if I, if I live over here and I want to have eight people come and stack their cars up on the side of the street and throughout the day, I'm bringing them into my one-car garage to work on.
So the problem with regulating that like.
Because I asked that question and Linda's answer was, then it becomes a commercial business, then they're violent, they're in violation.
But they, they wouldn't be if it was allowed, though. That's what I'm getting at. If, if, if we're allowing automobile in P four and P five, we have.
So in P four, it has to, it's house form, retail only.
So, so, so if I'm at my house.
Yes.
With my one-car garage, I can operate an auto repair business out of my one-car garage.
If you're not creating, if you're not creating a nuisance.
Right.
Yeah, you'd have to go to a P four.
Right.
Right, no, I'm saying, if I'm in a P four already and it looks like a house and everything, right? So then, so the question would be is, would neighbors want somebody stacking up eight cars in the street for somebody to work on throughout the day and so on and so forth? That's where the nuisance would come in, to allow it, but on a small scale. And if it's going to be on a larger scale, then you have to move into the, you know, you have to find an appropriate spot for that.
Yeah, it's difficult to regulate it on, on, on a public street. It's difficult to regulate on ownership because a code enforcement officer has to go and check ownership. They then have to issue a notice of violation, uh, goes through the process, ten days, and by that time, the car's gone.
Hence, my suggestion that it be prohibited by default and you come in.
So auto-related uses would be prohibited in P four.
That's what I'm suggesting.
Allowed in P five.
There's no other, it doesn't sound like there's any other efficient way to manage that. So our, our neighbors get stuck.
Well, you regulate it by nuisance by, by noise. Noise would be a way that you would regulate it.
Okay. And, and so you can hear me removing tires, you know?
Yeah, if you're using an impact wrench all day long, removing tires, it's over eighty decibels. That's a violation of the nuisance ordinance. Wouldn't be allowed in P four.
What if it was my own car?
If it's your own car?
Right. Do we now have a, is there, do we remove the commercial component from that now?
Yeah, I think it's a frequency and I think there's certain allowances within the nuisance code that, uh, give allowances for like cutting your yard, for example, uh, and certain like weekend things. Chief, do you have a, is it, am I speaking correctly on that? Yes. So there's certain, uh, things that are allowed for within the nuisance ordinance that take care of common sense, like, hey, I'm changing my oil, or hey, I'm helping my nephew put a lift kit on his truck one weekend.
Easy to enforce what, what we have now, chief, or difficult?
Will be once we update our nuisance regulations.
I, what I don't, what I don't want is to blanket allow certain uses to where our neighbors encounter a situation where the city's like, we really want to help you and we have a way to do that.
Well, I think it's a fair question.
A pain in the butt to do and it's going to take a while.
Right. So in, in P four, where we're talking house form, commercial, right? When you think house form, commercial, do you think an auto repair business? Or do you need to have a P five to do that, for example?
I don't think of an auto repair business. That's why I'm suggesting prohibiting things like that.
That's why I'm saying that's a great, it's a good conversation. So what would you think? Maybe, uh, a little deli or coffee shop or dentist or accounting firm?
We're basically talking about Spring Street, Pecan, um, like areas like that where we, where we have.
Yes.
Things exactly like that. So.
Antique shop.
I agree. That's why I'm suggesting things that are like automotive or industrial, period.
So do all of y'all agree that automotive-related uses are probably not appropriate in P four? No, you think they are.
Because I think there's things like window tinning that you can do on a one-on-one basis if you live in a P four. That's not a, that wouldn't, that wouldn't be prohibited if.
But can, can you think of one example right now that exists like that? That's kind of like, based on your last statement, that's kind of what I'm, what I'm, what I'm thinking is, what do we have right now in these particular, uh, areas? So if I think of like a P four mix, I'm not thinking of like Main Street so much. I'm thinking of like Spring Street, uh, was it Pine over here, Pecan?
Walnut.
What businesses do we have operating out of old homes right now?
North Maine?
We, we, we have, we have professional offices. We had, uh, you know, dentists that was over there at Spring Street at one point. Okay, we have things like that. We don't have manufacturing. We don't have auto, auto repair or auto-type businesses over there. We don't have, um, stuff like that.
Right.
In those particular areas. So why are we, why are we going out of our way to allow things that typically right now in standard vast drop aren't even in existence right now?
If somebody doesn't have eight cars lined up, if somebody doesn't use impact wrenches all day long, if somebody doesn't create a nuisance, why do we care?
And part of, of, of this whole process, I think, was to open up more opportunities for the citizens of vast drops to become fiscally sustainable within themselves, that they may want to open up a small business if allowable and certainly live and happen to live in his own. Um, and to remove the, a lot of the restrictions that we have that prevented people from doing that.
I think we should move into nuisances because that doesn't sound like any of those have.
Well, we're not going to be debating whether a, a sound is a nuisance. We all know that.
No, no, no. I'm not saying that. What I'm saying is, the question is, is, does anybody, do we have any consensus on?
Let me, let me, before we move on.
We're not reading that. We're not reading.
Yeah, see if there's any other discussion and then I kind of want to put a, make sure I'm, know where y'all are headed.
What about from this end of the, the dais? Greg, wake up.
Yeah, I'm, I'm kind of leaning with, uh, Patrick there on automotive repair stuff. Now, if we're talking about window tinning and stuff, I think it can be stated in there that, you know, installing stereos, window tinning and stuff like that, that's not going to have a noise issue. I don't care, you know?
So we're gonna, we're gonna regulate the noise through the nuisance. So I, I would argue you don't need to put it as a use because we're going to regulate that, to your point, from a nuisance through the noise regulations.
So man, a question on that, just kind of with this auto repair. So you're living in a P three neighborhood.
Yes.
You decide, you know what, I want to do some small auto repairs. I'm pretty good at it. I think I can handle a car two at a time in my garage. No big deal. So you go and you apply for a P four zoning change.
That's correct.
Gets changed, so you're allowed, your one little island of houses now a P four and a sea of P three. You know, kind of around it. You start doing this, you're really good at it, so your business starts expanding and so cars do start backing up and kind of creating more of what the neighbors might see as a nuisance. Where did, is there a difference in nuisance level between the P four zoning and the P three zoning? I mean, like we talked about in the neighborhood where, sure, you're mowing your lawn. It's okay to have above eighty decibels for a little while, but running an impact wrench, not so much. I mean, there's set criteria for that. So if the neighbors then call and say, hey, look, this isn't what we signed up for. We signed up for, you know, whoever they could, you know, start fixing some cars and make some money. You know, but now we're, you know, talking about something really heavy. What is the, I mean, how does, how do the nuisances then regulate that? How do the neighbors have some recourse to say, look?
Can you speak to any of the frequency that's in there? I know, and, and to be honest, we haven't a hundred percent vetted it yet. There's still, council's still looking at it.
I also just, just clarification. This is, this is not, things like this, things that are prohibited in P three would require a zoning change, not a CUP.
That's correct.
Which makes zero sense to me for spot, to, to get, because you end up with spot zoning, which is what we've been trying to get away with for a while. Why not a CUP? So that when that property sells, it goes, that use goes away and somebody has to start over again.
So if it's, it's in line with the, the comp plan, which all the character districts will allow different place types within them. So it's not spot zoning, um, if it's contemplated by the comp plan.
Right, but we're, we're saying, we have a, we have a, we have an area of P three with P four, P four, P four, P four. And that's, that's now what it is forever until somebody decides to change it. Why not a CUP situation where it's like, yes, you can do that, but if you sell or the use changes or something like that, it goes away and it still continues to be an area of P three.
I think we're just wanting to have that flexibility built in. And if it doesn't create a nuisance, then why do you care?
I, it's not that I care. It's that, it's, if, if you're trying to do something in an area you're not allowed to, why change the zoning? Why not just allow a C, why not just use a CUP to allow that non-allowable use? So that once you sell or ten years from now, you still have the integrity of the area. It's still, we, we're not, it, by, by that point, we should say, to hell with the whole thing. Everybody come show up, let us know what you want to do with it and we'll, we'll approve the change or not. And we just, everybody starts with the same P one and we just move up from there. There's no sense in saying this area, we want to see P three over here if we allow everybody individually to change to a P four. And there's no process for that to revert back to what it should be. So that's why I'm, that's why I'm arguing. So there's got to be another process. The CUP process is what I'm advocating for.
I think that's why the P four is only in house form, because it can transition back to. So if you open a dentist office in a P four and it, it sells, I can go back and I can live in that structure. Um, I might be able to put a granny flat back there and use it as.
I'm looking at more like Matt's example. I, I live in an, I live in a neighborhood of, of P three.
Yeah, so his question, chief, is, uh, if I live in a P, if there's a P three area and then somebody comes for a P four, maybe they can have a couple of cars or window tinning. They get good, they get larger, they start doing something else and it becomes a nuisance. How will that, i- if it's allowed in the P four, how is that nuisance regulated? Is it that frequency, uh, that's being built in? So if it's not over circuit frequencies? And if we just haven't gotten there, that's fine too.
We, we haven't gotten there, but some of the problems that I see is when we talk about having a car repair shop and things like that. If, if you have vehicles that are out on the street or they're in public, they're not registered, they're not running, they're disabled. They become junk vehicles. And so that kicks in a different law. That's a state law that takes in and, and, and deals with that. The problem that we have when we say, well, you got to register the vehicle, the owner, just because I own a vehicle doesn't mean I have to register it. Um, if my parents have it, if my, if I buy it from a friend and the registration's still good, nothing forces me to, to go change the title, change the registration. So that can become problematic when we're trying to, to do enforcement that, that ways. And my understanding in the ideology, but going through the codes and going through the ordinances and breaking things down and going by nuisances, it's, it's applicable to everybody. And so you shouldn't be able to make more noise than eighty-five decibels that's measured from, from my property, from your, at your house, or eighty at nighttime. Doesn't matter if you're in a P one, a P five or whatever. You are disturbing somebody. And, and, and that's how it goes unless there's a permit or a special event or, or some other catalyst that kicks in there or some of the defenses, uh, that says this is not a violation of the noise ordinance. So those are what we're looking at as far as light, sound, odor and things, so that are applicable to everybody throughout the city. And, and, and you don't have to worry about, as soon as I cross this street, now I can be louder or not louder, um, based on what's taking place. And something, and talking about sound, we're going to present that, um, uh, as a workshop to council next Tuesday. There, there's obvious things that, you know, if, if you're by, by the football stadium, when there's a schedule football thing, there's going to be noise. And, and at the rodeo facility, if you buy the house next to the rodeo, when the rodeo's in, in play, uh, you're going to have noise normally that you don't. That's part of when you buy property in certain locations and, and so.
Those would all have to be permitted then, right? So playing music downtown on the weekends, they need a permit then, right?
Well, they, they can, but, but I'm going to tell you, eighty decibels is pretty loud.
Right.
Okay, and so if, 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 if I own a house three blocks down from downtown and, and make a complaint and the police officer comes and pulls out his, his, his decimal meter and it's clicking at eighty decibels, they're, they're in violation.
What if, what if I'm in a, what if I'm in a ADU on top of a building downtown? Like fifty feet from.
Where you live above it.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm with you.
Or, or my wife and I are walking down the street on a Saturday night doing an ice cream film. We sit down at the bench and we can't talk to each other because the outdoor music ten feet away is exceeding their property line, so.
Right, but right now, you're in a public place and you're not on your property. So that's, that's, that's the difference, the way the ordinance is written right now.
Fair enough. So, so, so three blocks away, totally get it. Living over one of the buildings downtown, now we, you know, now we get somebody that moves in that doesn't like the music downtown for whatever reason. And so now we, now we get into an issue where we have to, they have to have a permit to do that, right? Otherwise their music gets shut down, right?
It's, it's, it's definitely a conversation that, that we can bring up with the workshop.
My, my other, my other thing with, with changing, um, this is more of a Matt thing, sorry. Uh, my, my other thing with changing with, with spot zoning changes is that if you change a P three property to a P four, all P four issues are now there. So maybe I'm only working on a couple of cars and I sell that property. Well, maybe I want to open up a massage business or I, or can I put now commercial signage on the outside of this house because it is a P four? Or can I, you know, I can literally do anything that's as acceptable in a P four as long as I'm not outside. But that doesn't necessarily mean that everybody in my neighborhood wants all P four activities.
Yeah, so signage will be regulated in P four. Uh, so no, you can't have like a monument sign. I think they're contemplating having like a plaque or something on the structure, uh, but it, and it's not allowed in P three, so.
What if we change a P three to a P four to allow for a couple, working on a couple of cars here and there? I sell my house. You know what? I want to open up a daycare with ten kids. And, and as long as I'm not violating that, you know, but there's a lot of foot traffic there in the mornings and the afternoons or there's kids in the, you know, run around the neighborhood. I, I have an issue with permanently changing the zoning on something that is probably better suited for more of a CUP that once ownership changes or the use changes, they have to come back up and say, hey, you know.
I, I understand your logic and I think that's the way we've always done things. And I think the direction was that if it's not creating a nuisance, so if those children are not creating a nuisance, why do I care if it's a daycare or if it's an auto business or it's a massage place, to your point?
How do you, how do you use a nuisance? How do you regulate foot traffic using the nuisance section?
Foot traffic is a nuisance?
Yeah.
I, I don't think that foot traffic is a nuisance.
So, so, so vehicles coming and going all day long.
Vehicle trips per day is different. So you're talking about vehicle trips.
When I say, when I say foot traffic, I don't mean necessarily people walking in front of them.
You're talking about vehicle trips?
People coming and going, you know, in and out of my neighborhood all day long. You know, into, into the neighbor's house, people are in and out all day long. Cars are pulling up, they're stacking up. They're, you know, my kids can't play outside because there's an excessive amount of traffic out there, you know, and, and stuff like that. So those, those.
Can you address how, if we regulate stacking or queuing, if that's a ticketable offense or if?
Stacking, depending on how they park, is, is definitely enforceable under, under state law. And if we needed to change something, we could do that under an ordinance. But right now, if I, if I wanted to drive loops in Hunter's Crossing and my fifty friends want to do that all day long, there is nothing under law that can, that can prohibit that.
That's true, but if I'm, if I'm putting a beacon up and, and bringing people in there, you know, that's different. Because you and your fifty friends are likely not going to go and, you know, cruise around Hunter's Crossing just for the, for the heck of it, but.
But, but it's, but it is a common occurrence that we have where somebody's upset because somebody's parking their car in front of my house on, on the public street.
That's not necessarily what I mean. What I mean is that, that we, not that, you know, hey, you're having a birthday party and there's fifteen cars and I'm, I'm upset because, you know, you parked where I usually park. I don't necessarily mean that one-time occurrences. I mean daily occurrences where we have an increase in non-neighborhood traffic, like, like those these Hunter's Crossing. So an excessive amount of cars in and out, traffic, you know, foot traffic in and out of a house.
I don't, I don't know how I could, how we could enforce that from a. I don't, I don't know how I could, how we could enforce that from a law enforcement standpoint because, you know.
I, I don't think we can, I think, I think we enforce it by saying, hey, if you want to have that business, the city gets a say, as do your neighbors via CUP process.
Matt, let's, let me just clarify, P threes are not going to be, neighborhoods are not going to be P four. We, that's why we have these place types. If you're in a P, if you're in a P three and P four area, it could be for mixed use, but you would have to be in that use, is that correct?
We're talking about taking a P three and getting a change to P four.
If you're in the mixed use, you can do that.
If somebody wants to go from a P three to a P four, they have to come, they have to apply, we have to notify, uh, we have to send letters out. They have to come before you and city council twice, and that's a great conversation to have at that point, say, I realize that you want to do a daycare, but if I give you this P four zoning, what's to keep the next person from operating X, Y, Z? And that's a very appropriate conversation to have. I will say on top of just the nuisances for daycares and other things, it, it's still business, they still have to get a certificate of occupancy. So they have to do the parking, you know, they have to do the occupancy load, they still have to go through all those things, uh, in order to operate that business. So it's not like I can just say, oh heck, I want to open this up in my house. Like they still have to come and, and go through the proper permitting, proper, uh, regulations and checks with our certificates of occupancy and those things.
So, so would we be putting, so for somebody that's coming into our community, moving their family here, are we going to have an interactive map showing all the spot zoning? Because it would be due diligence for a buyer to say, hey, I'm buying a house three doors down from something they could do mechanic work for, a massage or a daycare or a smoke shop or whatever else, because that's something that, you know, because what we end up with is neighborhoods that have, over time, have a patchwork of different things. And so it just, it makes sense down in this area, it doesn't make sense in P three to just change it period forever.
We have that, we have that on page sixty-two of our manual, the place type map, it's all mapped out with the neighborhoods, the mix, the core.
But we also have a zoning map.
Right, but we're talking about being able to change that.
Right, but that would be in the mixed use.
In the P four.
Right, but we're talking, we're not, but I'm not, I'm not, I'm not hating on any one use. I'm saying that over time, we end up with, you know, P three specific areas, that's what they're supposed to be with P four uses, which can drive down property values that we, we kind of, somebody mentioned earlier, it can create a lot of different issues in the future. I just think that having a blanket change forever.
So we have those all over downtown, all over downtown, right? We have those, and the fiscal sustainability model actually says that downtown is the only sustainable place in the city of Bastrop. So I, I'm not sure there's any data that will tell you otherwise.
I, I would, I would tell you that if, as we rep, as we grow and replicate downtown, absolutely, totally agree. But we have neighborhoods that we have to consider now.
And we're going to zone those P three.
Right, but.
And if you want to have a P four, you have to have a conversation with your neighbors.
Right, I, I.
And it doesn't mean that we're going to change the P three to P four. It doesn't mean.
But if we do, it's forever.
We, well, we have done that here, we have approved some and we have not approved some. And I think the process would be basically the same.
We approve, we're talking about, you're talking about zoning changes, right?
Zoning changes.
Right, but we've never approved a CUP that is forever, even if the use changes. And the three years I've been here, we've never approved a CUP that was like, oh, you can do.
A CUP is use specific.
Right, which, which is, which is what I'm arguing or, or advocating for is that if you want to work on cars in the neighborhood, great. If the next person that buys your house or you stop working on cars, you don't get to do whatever you want that's in, in, uh, P four. You have to come back before your neighbors, back before the council, back before P and Z and say, hey, don't want to work on cars anymore. Now I want to run, you know, not daycare, we keep using daycare as example, now I want to have a smoke shop, you know, in our neighborhood. Now I want to sell sex toys in our neighborhood, it's allowed under P four. I'm not doing anything outside, there's no signage, I'm on Google, everybody knows I'm here, right? I think the neighbors should be able to have a say when the use changes, but changing something permanently from P three to P four doesn't do that. It just says forever going forward, it's P four and you can do whatever you want as long as you don't violate the nuisance.
And I think, so in the interest of making a recommendation.
What's that?
As, as a commission, for P four, are y'all more comfortable regulating by nuisance or CUP? Commissioner Gartman, where do you fall on this issue?
I think I would go with the CUPs.
CUPs, okay.
I kind of have more of an expanded question I want to ask to.
Let's hear it, this is good.
Well, I'm just, I'm just looking at the process of, you know, typically we always had, you know, we're zoned in certain ways and that's what you could use and it was very rigid. Clearly this is a much more loose zoning, you know, so we have these character zones that are set up and by definition have to include different mixes of, you know, P one through P four, P five. Like I know that council one time talked about, we're going to require thirty percent of this, forty percent of that, that's more morphed into, let's just let the market decide. You know, as far as how we break up these character zones and what kind of use. And so clearly to my example before where you're in an island of P three and you start a shop, I mean, I, I totally understand Patrick's argument. But I also see that this, these areas that can have multiple P four, P threes, you know, like close to downtown, sure, we may have a lot of P three really tight to downtown when this first comes out, but as Bastrop grows, it's a mechanism by which P three can pretty easily get moved to P four because your neighbors are, you know, you know, other shops, you know, there are other retail places. It is the dentist next door and you're saying, hey, I want to open a tire shop next door if you'd mind, but those are your neighbors or, you know, the dental shop or, you know, the auto shop. And so it's easier in those areas to convert from a P three to a P four because it's more consistent with that area use of that zoning. And so, but is that, I mean, is that what this is being used as, is kind of this area, a way for downtown to grow, you know, off of the center of Chestnut without necessarily having to go through some massive rezoning of an entire neighborhood? Where, you know, like we got a little island of, you know, different zoning, seems like spot zoning, but if it's slowly going to fill in as P four over time because the location of it is going to dictate that that's going to be retail at some point. I mean, is that kind of the intent of the code? Where, I mean, I mean, because I totally get P four in the middle of the sea of P three, doesn't really make sense, but is the guy, is the guy really going to do that?
I'm also not, I'm also not saying there shouldn't be a mechanism to, to, to move it from P three to P four, there should absolutely be that. But do we need to do that for specific uses? If, 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 if a neighborhood over time says, hey, we have like, all these people have CUPs for, you know, for different P four activities and somebody's like, hey, y'all want to get together and we'll just create like some P four area because this ain't going back to, you know, to residential, there should be a way to do that. But I don't know if we need a zoning change for me to, you know, start a business or, or change businesses if that's not what the primary area is.
Cause I think that, I mean, over time, I mean, I know we've got, kind of got this mandate going forward that, you know, every year we got to review this thing. And, you know, and so we can easily take stuff like that and say, look, we've asked, gone for four CUPs in this area over the last year, should we just make the whole thing?
We, we could also say, we could also say something that like if, if, because we've broken everything up into like neighborhoods, right? So we could also say, we could also say that, you know what, if the neighborhood is fifty percent or more CUP uses, so not standard P three uses, then we could look at, you know, or, or if it's, if it's less than fifty percent, you still need a CUP. Once CUPs hit over fifty percent, you could just do a zoning change and it doesn't matter because that's likely not going back to what it was. I'm just trying to protect the integrity of this neighborhood here and not give somebody a blanket pass forever moving forward to do whatever they want P four related just because at some point someone was able to convince their neighbors they were going to do something very small P four and it's changed. And so now, you know, like I said, I'm, you know, a, a smoke shop is probably a P four activity. If you live in Hunter's Crossing, do you want a smoke shop, you know, right in your neighborhood? Probably not.
So today you couldn't have it, they'd have to come get a P four zoning.
Right, okay, bad example. Um, I want to, okay, not a bad example, I want to do, I want to work on a couple of cars at a time. My neighbors go, yeah, that sounds great, doesn't bother us, P four, great. Then I buy your house and I'm going to open a smoke shop and you can't stop me because it's already zoned P four. And, and I'm not bothering, there's no smell, there's no sound, there's no visuals that are bothering you. So now you have a, you have a smoke shop in a residential neighborhood, let's pick Hunter, let's pick on Hunter's Crossing, and the city has, there's nothing they can do about it. City has no ability to go in there and say, no, don't do that, uh, you know, because then the city gets sued because it says in our code that they can do that.
I, I, I get Patrick's point and I, I think that's what you should take back to council. I think that you should take his point, which is a valid point. Um, and then the rest of the discussion, take that back to council and see what can, what can be done to revise the language.
And this is, this is not about P three, P four, P five or EC, it's about the mechanism by which we allow alternative uses that are already allowed. So I'm not even talking about anything specific, I'm talking about the fifty thousand foot view, which is, do we need a zoning change just to allow a specific use? You know, and if, what are the repercussions of having a zoning change and bumping up a classification? You know, here's, here's the other thing, what, what about the reverse?
So what would be allowed, what would be allowed in P four? In a house form residential? So I'm going to go and I'm going to.
Two hundred and ninety uses.
I'm sorry?
Two hundred and ninety, we're going back to two hundred and ninety uses.
Well, minus the industrial ones, so, two hundred and seventy-five.
I got a question, Patrick, um, are, are you saying then you'd rather see it where it ended, once that use stopped and that it stays there, it doesn't, doesn't carry on?
Right, once, once, once the, once the use changes, it reverts back to being a P three. So, so if you, if Matt's doing repairing a couple of cars, I buy Matt's house and I still want to repair a couple of cars, no big deal, okay? I want to stop repairing cars and I want to open up a smoke shop, hey, use is changing, hey, neighbors in existence right now, hey, city council, hey, P and Z, I'd like to open up a smoke shop in the center of Hunter's Crossing, are we good?
What if I want to open up a, uh, I don't, a.
Combined lots.
A trinket store.
It's really hard to come up with examples.
That sells, and what if I want to open up an antique shop? Do I still have to come have a conversation with you?
Absolutely, because, because, because the, the, the community at large, your neighbors should have a say in whatever commercial activities you're conducting in, in their area. And part of this also exists where if you buy downtown, you know, you're going to hear music on the weekends and that you live off of Chestnut Main Street, okay? You know that going in, that is a due diligence thing for a buyer of a piece of property. If you buy in Hunter's Crossing, okay, um, and we all know when the, when the apartment discussion came and they were all really pissed off and upset because the due diligence was lacking when they bought in Hunter's Crossing and nobody knew that at some point those two sites were going to be apartments and they were really upset about it, right? Now, now, that's, that was known for a long time, but the, the idea is, is that there was no mechanism for due diligence in that. If we have spot zoning like this in a neighborhood like Hunter's Crossing, because I keep picking on them, you could go drive in Hunter's Crossing and have twenty different businesses throughout the entire neighborhood and those businesses could be anything that's allowed in P four.
So I, I do agree with that, Patrick, um, if you have gotten an allowance for a P four, that does not carry on with the property. That would go back to a P three until they came back, a new owner came back and asked for.
Not, not, not the new, not a new owner, but if the use changed, so even if it was the same owner but changing the use, the use wouldn't.
So you want.
And you're not saying that it could not again be a P four, but you'd have to have a conversation first.
So you want every retail application in P four to have a CUP?
No, 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 I'm not arguing for changes in this, I'm, I'm talking about the mechanism by which we, because right now I'm hearing the only thing we have is the availability is to change the zoning.
Yes.
I'm arguing for an intermediate level where you don't need to change the zoning, but you can still have a use that may not normally be, yes, I'm arguing for not.
So you would like CUPs?
Some mechanism, we'll call it whatever we want, but yes, that, where you don't have a zoning change that's permanent, you have a use that's not typical in that area that is approved.
You may want to call it something else, but.
Uh, call it what it is.
Initial use stuff, I don't know, whatever you want to call it, I'm just, I, my biggest thing is again, the unintended consequences of allowing unlimited uses.
So if I have a CUP, okay, so if it's a P four, if I, if we go and rezone the town and a property gets zoned C, or P four today.
In a P three area.
Well, it's a P four zoning now, so we have gone and we have rezoned at P four. What are your, what are your expectations on that property owner to be able to do by right? If we go and zone it at P four.
If it's P four now, they can do whatever P four, whatever.
Including automotive. If it doesn't create a nuisance, so if they're window tinning, that's okay.
I think that was a bit of, I think it was a bit of a trick question because Patrick wants to say yes to that, but he doesn't want to say no to the automotive.
No, I, no, 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 I'll.
I think that was a tricky way of asking that question.
No, it's a, it's a, it's a very, it's a specific question.
My discussion of CUPs, my discussion of CUPs is simply a mechanism to allow automotive in P four, right, where it's normally not, so.
So you, you, you think?
No, no, no automotive in P four without a CUP.
Without a CUP.
That's Patrick, that's Patrick's point of view, but my bigger discussion is the fact that there should be a mechanism to allow automotive in P four without making P four, P five.
So that would be a CUP?
Yes.
Cause you are, you are changing the use of that property.
We're not changing the zoning though.
You have to go through the public process, that would be a CUP.
Correct, so I'm, I'm saying they should have a way to do automotive in P four without having to change P four to P five.
So they could have an office in P four?
Yeah.
A barber shop?
Yes.
A little deli?
Let's, let's, let's put it this way, if I'm in P four, which is, you know, a mix of residential building types and I bought a lot there, all right? And I want, and I wanted to change it to P five to do something with it, at some point I could knock down that house and build row houses or apartments.
Well, you'd have to change it to P five and that's a really different conversation.
But, but if, but if it's, if, what I'm getting at is that if, if somebody comes in and says, hey, I want to move my P four to a P five, now everything in P five is available in that.
That's correct.
Residential-ish, commercial mix. Which to me is an unintended consequence.
Okay, so let's get, I, I need some direction, I, I think we can talk about this for another two hours.
If you want to do something else with that property, as long as the neighbors don't care, it's not a nuisance, then you get a CUP, right?
That's, that's.
And it always stays a P three.
That's what I'm advocating for.
That's what I'm hearing.
Okay, so you want to see, you, you're okay with office type uses, et cetera, et cetera. So you're okay with most commercial, but when it comes to automotive in a P four, you want to see a CUP?
No, I mean, that's a very specific question, I want, what everybody else thinks.
Guys, we're going to have to implement this code, it's very specific, you're talking about specific uses not being allowed, I need to know how to regulate that.
I think that, I think in the, in the automotive is kind of Patrick's issue, I, I get the feeling that.
I'm trying to, I'm trying to get a pulse for the group if I can get there.
I feel that most people don't care about the automotive specifically.
And that's what I'm trying to ask and I'm not picking on you, but I need to know if you're a lone wolf or if we have a consensus.
We're using the automotive for the bigger question of this idea of just any shop being in the middle of this, of a P three and the neighbors not being, have a chance to complain once that property changes hands and someone starts doing something different with the property.
But if it's not creating a nuisance, do you care?
Yes. Because, because.
I know how you feel, I'm trying to get a, a sense so we can make a recommendation.
P four may not, the, the use that you're requesting for this P four may not be a nuisance with this, with the person that comes to you right now asking for a P four in a P three neighborhood. But the next person that comes along may have something that the neighbors don't want.
So if that's a nuisance, we could regulate it and we could tell them to cease and assist and they cannot do that there.
Use, use my example of a smoke shop.
It's smoke.
If, if we, if we were to, if we were to poll the people that live in Hunter's Crossing and say, hey, would you be okay if a smoke shop that doesn't create noise, okay? Or light pollution or smells, so it's not that, would you be okay though with a smoke shop in your neighborhood? The rounding, the rounding consensus would probably be hell no.
So I have smoke shops and I have some others.
So, so as, as an example, just because it's not a nuisance under sight, smell, sound and, and looks, doesn't mean that the community at large is not going to view it as a nuisance type use where it doesn't necessarily belong.
Okay, so.
Matt, let me just ask you something real quick to see what, if I'm understanding. If you're in a P three and you want to go to a P four, they have to come before P and Z.
Yes ma'am, that's a zoning change.
Therefore neighbors will have an input, just like we do now.
That's correct, that's correct.
But not in the future. You, if. If I come to you and I'm able to convince you to change because I want to work on two cars and then a year later I sell my house and nobody's working on cars, but they want to turn it into something else that's not, you know, just me moving a couple of cars in and out of my garage, you know, once or twice a day, you know, a smoke shop or, or whatever else you want.
Something that's still allowable under P four.
Something that's still allowable under, under, under P four. You don't get a say so in the future about what other P four uses are allowed.
So that's what you want him to ask or put in? That's what we want?
So can you all agree you don't want a smoke shop in P4?
What's that?
You all not want a smoke shop in P4? I mean...
So I think, so this, this is what, where I would...
I don't want a specific prohibition on anything that's allowed by law.
So that, that's the question I would like every single one of you to answer.
I, I...
As long as it's legal and it's allowed by law.
With all due respect, I, I really understand how you feel. I, I know, but you're one person on a nine-member board, and I need to get a consensus to make a recommendation.
I don't disagree. I think we're getting caught up, though, in the P, like, the P4.
Okay, let's, let's, let's hear from Tom.
Well, I, I, I totally agree in the P3 going to a P4. If that use changes, it should go back to a P3. I don't want, I might be perfectly okay with a daycare being next door to me, but then the daycare closes down and an auto repair shop comes in or, or something along that line.
So what you're saying is you would...
I might not like that at all, so I think...
You would like to see that as a CUP rather than a zoning change?
Yes, absolutely.
Gotcha. Thank you. That's you, same there, okay?
Okay. You're great.
I'm trying to wrap my mind. I'd rather go with the nuisance. I, I understand what they're talking about.
Thank you.
But I, I believe that the, the market and the building type should carry on, and I think it's a new way of thinking. It's a little, we can revisit this all the time. Uh, I think we've picked out, it's like, we've picked out an example that's gonna fail as a strong man argument. Um, but I think the way they're thinking about it, and I've seen this, it's, it's thinking about letting the buildings kind of do their thing, you know, and then creating these new neighborhoods that can grow that way, and we're gonna control it with nuisances. So it's not that it's not, they can't blanket, but...
I mean, not, not everything is controllable with nuisances.
That's why we'll revisit the nuisances.
We'll go back and revisit this in a year anyway. I think we know how to...
No.
We're gonna talk about it again on July 9th with council, so...
I think since we're gonna revisit it in a year, I really like the CUP idea, but I would say we would let it fly with nuisance and see how it goes.
Oh, let it fly.
And I'm for nuisance.
Nuisance?
Because I think it's very important if someone gets a usage allowance and the neighborhood to be able to have say-so if that changes, I'm gonna go with CUP.
Patrick, how do you feel?
Well, now, now that you, now that you passed.
No, okay, so that, that's useful. So as a group, you all are more leaning towards the CUP in P4? Yes, ma'am.
And we're gonna go back and revisit it in a year.
Yeah. So I have a conflict to convolute y'alls', uh, question there. If, if we're looking at ways to, to regulate with the P4 and the, in the, well, if, if you get a zoning change to a seat, to a P4, are you okay if you use that as an office? Any type of office? So my question is, do we have to have every retailer service? Okay, so may we then, based off y'alls' conversations, say, most of what you want to do, as long as it's house form, we're good with? However, if you want to do automotive, daycare, smoke shop, you need to come see us? No.
What I want is that if someone is in a P3 neighborhood, if they want a P4?
Use?
Usage?
Yes, ma'am.
They have to have a CUP.
They will...
Rather than a zoning change.
Okay.
I don't care what it is, as long as it's legal.
I can think we can simplify this. We're, we're talking about P4 a lot. P3, okay? If you want anything other than what's allowed in P3, it must be a CUP.
Well, it would have to get as...
Without, there'd be no zoning change, it would be a CUP. In, in P3 only...
So that changes a complete conversation to start allowing commercial businesses in P3?
Wait, say that again?
That changes the conversation to now you're gonna allow CUPs in a P3. So to even...
Are you saying that, that, that they are already not allowed in a P3?
Yes. None of this is allowed in a P3.
Okay. So in P3, it is a neighborhood, and it can never be anything but that. There's no mechanism, except for a change, zoning change.
Except for a zoning change to a P4. You cannot do any of this that we've been talking about at all in P3.
Then I'd, I'd still be in favor of CUPs for place four, because you're, you're changing, you're changing a neighborhood to a mixed-use area.
So if I have P4 zoning, you want me to come to you with a CUP for, to open up a dentist?
No, if you're P3.
You cannot do it in a, in a P3.
Yes, but you can request a P3 to be a P4, right?
Yes.
Okay. And that, that's...
That was that conversation.
That, that permanent change to a P4 in a P3 area is, is what I think is what...
Okay. So that still doesn't get us anywhere with what we want in P4? Because you can't have a CUP for a use that you're not gonna allow to upzone. If that makes sense? You can't have a CUP, so everything we're talking about has to be a P4. Right? So if I'm a property owner in a P3, I can't come to you and request a CUP in a P4 because I'm zoned P3. Can't happen. No, ma'am. Not unless you just allow CUPs in P3, which I don't think you want to do.
Well, that changes all...
That's why I go back to the nuisance.
That's, that's my point.
Right. Because I don't, I, I, I've been here again forever, and I've never seen a automotive place on the corner of anywhere in my neighborhood that I've lived in for almost forty years. Um, when you get into smoke shops and things of those nature, things of that nature. Um, so let's ask this question. So let's say somebody opens a smoke shop.
What are, what am I zoned?
I'm zoned a P4 mix.
I'm zoned P4 mix, thank you.
Okay. And my automotive guy moves out. Somebody opens a smoke shop. I don't like the smoke shop. Two or three of my neighbors don't like the smoke shop.
Okay.
How does that smoke shop issue get addressed?
If it doesn't create a nuisance, it does not.
So it's a personal nuisance, because I don't like the smoke shop.
We don't regulate personal nuisance.
Exactly. So...
So, but you can have prohibited uses. Let me get my fancy dancing chart. Yep. So prohibited uses. So in P4, you could say, "We don't want a smoke shop." You can say, "You might be able to have an automotive shop, but you need to come get a CUP." But you can't say, "You just have to get a CUP," because then you're allowing CUPs in P3, which I don't think is what you want. So we're, what we're talking about is changing the use. A CUP for intensive purposes is a zoning change. It's a zoning change for one use.
With conditions. Right.
That's correct. So where I was getting at is, are you okay with an attorney's office in P4?
Yes.
Okay. Are you okay with a dentist office in P4?
Professional services, I think everybody would agree are allowed in P4.
So besides the smoke shop and the other unmentionables, and automotive, outside of that, if I'm a professional service, or I'm a little deli, or maybe I sell coffee, are y'all okay with that in P4?
I don't want, I don't want those restrictions in there like that. I, I think that's getting, uh, too regulating.
But you voted for CUPs, so explain it to me.
The reason I voted for CUP is this. Because if you are granted the P4 and your neighbors came in and spoke to you, and yes, we're cool with you having a, whatever, a cafe.
Yes.
And that's great. But then in two years, you move off, and someone buys your property, and now they want to put a massage parlor in there. I'm not okay with that just being able to convert over to something else if the neighborhood would not want that. That's why I would like there to be a mechanism for there to be input from the neighborhood if the use changes. And I know that's CUP. I know that, but I also agree with the nuisance. So it's, I've got a mix of both, honestly.
I think we're talking about the same thing. Because you want a lot of it to be allowed by right. Offices, professional services, right? So outside of that, if I'm P4 and I used it for an office, and now it sells, and now I want to open, uh, thank you, ma'am, a, a smoke shop, let's use the, the nightly, uh, term. Now, smoke shop is allowed in P4 if you come get a CUP. So there's a list of uses in the P4 district that said, "Yes, these are allowable only with a conditional use permit." So that would say, so you would say, in P4, you can have services, you can have this, you can have a deli. If you want a smoke shop, if you want an automobile-related use, if you want, let's throw a daycare in there. Those things are fine if you have, if you come and have a conversation with us first.
Exactly.
And if we notify your property, and...
That's what I'm saying. That's it, Matt. You hit the nail on the head.
Okay. You're, you're actually, you're, you're kind of mixing, I'm hearing two different things here. We, we're talking about professional services.
I'm trying to get a consensus from you guys, Richard. That's what I'm doing.
We're, we're talking about professional services here. I provide my services to you to do something. I'm not selling items. I'm not a retail business selling stuff. I'm selling services.
Okay.
So if, if the business is selling services, it's okay? But if it's a business selling items, it's not?
No, certain, certain types of items.
These types of services are okay, but these types of services aren't. These types of retail are okay, but these types of retail are not.
There's five or six services that if you're gonna operate in a P4, we think you should have a conversation with us.
Okay.
Anything outside of that, knock yourself out.
See...
So long as you don't create a nuisance. I mean, that's still, that, that's still...
In my view, CUP is for an upgraded use. Doing something in P4 that's only allowed in P5.
See, and that, that's where we're...
I'm not talking about, I'm not having, like, if you're in P4, whatever's available in P4, do whatever you want. But if there's a use in P5 that's not allowed in P4, and you want to do that in P4, that's what I was talking about. The CUP usually uses it as like an upgrade versus just changing the zoning to the next level up.
So in the absence of the permitted use chart, which we're trying to get away from, we're saying, as long as you don't create a nuisance in P5, knock yourself out. Minus those industrial uses we talked about.
I understand the intent. I don't think that that's how the public would see it. If they end up in a situation where there's something they don't necessarily want to be next to, but can't do anything about it.
So if it does not create a nuisance, why would you not want to be next to it?
I could think of plenty of reasons why you would want to be next to certain types of businesses in your residential neighborhood.
Now you're talking about P5 and P3, when...
I'm sorry. If, if you have residential-type buildings, so you have a mix of, of, "I live here," and next door is an attorney's office, and, you know, so on and so forth. Um, you know, that's fine. But if I live here with my kids, and next door they sell sex toys, it's not a nuisance based on sight, smell, hearing, light emissions, stuff like that. It doesn't, it doesn't become a nuisance by any of those, but it's, it fits inside the usage, so... And, and, you know, to Richard's point, it's, it's, it, it does have to do with what they sell.
So we talked about SOBs, smoke shops, and those things.
Right.
So you can say, "We recommend as P and Z, those are not allowed in P4."
But they have to be allowed somewhere.
P5.
Right. So if I get a zoning change to do something not related to those at all, and it changes it to P5, if I sell it next year, somebody could come in, open up SOB.
In P5?
Yeah. Because now it's a P5 instead of a P4 here.
If you don't restrict them, that's correct.
That's what I'm trying to prevent.
Well, we're not allowing any P5 and P4.
You are, you are if somebody comes and gets a zoning change.
From a P3 to a P5?
No, P4.
From a P4 to a P5?
Let's say that we're saying SOBs are only allowed in P5s, right? Because they're not, they're not in P1 through 3, right?
Mm-hmm.
So, so it's, and we don't want them in, we don't want them in P4 either, because that's where we have, you know, people living, and although P5 has row houses and apartments, they have to be allowed somewhere, right?
Jennifer, where'd you go? Sorry.
She's back there.
Can you get, where do we allow them now in our permitted uses? SOBs?
Sexually-oriented business.
They're allowed in, um, they're allowed in industrial park and industrial uses with a conditional use permit.
Okay. So there you go.
Right.
So you can make a recommendation that any SOB, so your toy shops, uh, other things...
Only be allowed in EC?
Only allowed in EC with an ECP. You, sorry? Sorry.
And, and if that's what we're saying, that's the only place they're allowed? Okay. I'm good with that, because the chances of a P5 going to an EC are slim to none.
Sure.
That, that, that doesn't make sense. But going from P4 to a P5, that doesn't, that's not that, out of bounds.
Yep. SOB right now. Are we good with those in employment centers with a conditional use permit? Which is what we do today.
Yes. Yes? Everybody, no?
Yes.
That was good, good job.
I would say yes. The only thing I would say is, why would you be able to deny it? Why, why does it need to be a CUP?
Same, same reason that you could deny any zoning request.
But you have to allow them somewhere.
You do. Doesn't mean you have to approve a zoning change.
You said it's, you said it has to be a CUP. It's an EC with a CUP.
You allow, you allow them somewhere, similar to how we do today.
Right.
You just have to come and have a conversation. You allow them, doesn't mean you have to vote an affirmative for it.
Okay.
There's a number of things that you can deny a zoning request for.
Okay.
All right. So we're good on those. Okay. So I think, so P1 through P3, we're good. P5, I, I believe we're good. So the P4, um... This is a great, this is the frim zone that Matt Lewis was talking about. Um, so in the P4, and I'm gonna ask this question, then I want you all to answer it, if you would. So with the exception of a certain, like a smoke shop or automotive, and say childcare, we can leave it in, leave it out, or any other that we decide. If I am zoned P4, you are okay with offices with, um, you know, small-scale retail, small-scale restaurant services allowed by right in P4?
What is small-scale retail?
So you couldn't have a Home Depot or a Tractor Supply? Or it, it still has to be house form? No. You could not have, you can't have a grease trap, you can't do a lot of things. So we're talking about...
So there's a square footage that says that can only be up to this many square feet, that's how you do it?
Well, your lot, your building type, all that stuff will dictate that. So there are some things that just won't happen.
Okay.
But arguably, I could probably get away with having a small cafe if I wanted to serve sandwiches and tea. Are you okay with that in P4?
Yep.
Okay? Yes? Yes, ma'am, please.
Ask, were you putting in, with the exception of automotive?
Not yet.
Okay.
Not yet.
So the question, right. Would you ask the question again, please?
Yes. So, not including automotive, smoke shops, let's throw daycares in for right now. Are you okay with attorney's offices, services, small, like little deli, I want to sell tea or chai tea, I'm not sure? Those types of things, if it looks and operates as a house in P4 by right, are we good?
Yes.
I've got two yeses?
Yes.
Yes, 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 yes.
Yes.
Oh.
Yes.
Oh, all right, we're done. We can go home. No, I'm kidding. Okay, so... Automotive uses, had, uh, smoke shops, I, I'm not sure where we are in daycare, so I don't want to lump those in yet. But those two, do you think that those owe a conversation with you and council as a CUP to, to be allowed in P4? Or do you think we control them through nuisances?
Before we vote, I, I'd just like to say, I don't think it's so much about a conversation with us as much as it's about the neighbors getting to have a say-so in that.
That's a fair, absolutely.
It's more that than it is-
Do you think we should have to notify your neighbors, send them notices, and all that, them come through the public hearing process in order to operate those businesses in the P4, or do you think it should be regulated through nuisance?
Go with nuisance.
Okay.
Got a small question with that.
Yes.
Just as we talk with this, you know, the deli versus Chili's.
Yes.
You know, Need for Speed versus Discount Tire.
Yes.
I mean, no one has, I don't have a problem with Need for Speed, don't need to ask for it, just let them have it. But yeah, big, kind of more industrial oriented automotive-
So that's not house type, doesn't look in-
I get that, but I'm just giving that clarification.
Sure, absolutely.
As we have a difference between kind of restaurants, we do have a difference in automotive.
That's correct.
And we're talking about this small scale automotive that you can drop your car off, get your oil changed, get your tires rotated, you know, get your muffler put back on.
That's right.
And get out of there.
Okay.
Yes, I think that should be allowed by right.
Nuisance, okay.
Nuisance.
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 Okay. Same as your earlier vote? All right, you got it. It's not what I want. I want to make sure I'm representing it. Listen, I don't care. I'll regulate whatever y'all come up with. I don't write the codes. I just, we just have the fun job of regulating them. Okay, so autos, autos in a P4 are nuisance regulated. So daycares, y'all care about daycares then? Nuisances.
Nuisance.
Okay, excellent. Well, we got there. Okay, so, um... I think the rest of it, we're, I, I have clear direction on as far as the P3 and under. We're all squared away that P3 is only residential. Y'all are all comfortable with that. I didn't misrepresent that. And P5 is really open-ended, minus the industrial warehousing kind of uses that we'll figure out how to classify those, and then lump them only in EC. Yep. Have I represented everything correctly? Misrepresented anything? Anything I need to add?
Absolutely, but I know this is maybe a bit more fundamental than just what we've been tasked with, but this whole conversation about the conversion of C3 or P3 to P4.
Yeah.
Council needs to have that and understand what the concern is. Because I think those uses are fine, but it's a legitimate argument that I think council needs to consider before approving it.
It's a very good conversation for them to have on nuisances also.
You can unintentionally stick something in the middle of a residential area that, if I'm buying a house there, I'm not necessarily looking for businesses that are next door. I'm looking, you know, who are my neighbors? And you may unintentionally run into something. And I know that's kind of more just-
You, you're-
Speak, speaking to the most ang-, you know, to the most fearful part of it.
The daycares, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I know that's speaking more to the most fearful part of what could happen, which is probably not going to happen. But just that it's appreciated that we might run into this situation before it's a blanket, great, we got our uses.
That's why I don't want to underscore the process of a rezoning. Uh, state law is very specific on it for a reason, because it is very impactful. And you all have very tough decisions to make when those all come before you. Because you're right, it does impact people's daily lives, so that's the reason that if you want to jump from that P3 to a P4 to do anything, I don't care if you're running a, a, you know, an accounting office with two employees, you're going to have, come, have a conversation, right? Because it could be a little sandwich shop in the future, so, um, I don't want to underscore the difference between P3, P4, because it's significant. It's significant. And so is the difference between P4 and P5. Well, as Linda says, our city manager, this is making sausage. It's, it's not easy. It, it was a discussion because that's what we needed, right? It's, it's not, it's something, and I know this has been said before, but it, it's, it is unique to Bastrop. The way y'all have gone and the boldness of council and the openness of you all, it's really kind of unprecedented. Um, and it's encouraging, and I think it's a great thing. Will we get it right the first time? Maybe, maybe not, and that's why we're going to come and tweak it. And it's okay to do that, because we might learn something along the way. Uh, so, but it, it was a discussion for a purpose, because at the end of the day, we got to get somewhere, and it's not always easy, and that's probably why they test y'all with it, because y'all get paid so much. And, uh, y'all's time is, you know, pretty cheap. Uh, so yeah, I mean, it's good stuff. So we got excellent direction on permitted uses. Um, I thought they were great conversations. I, I think you share, uh, some sentiment with a lot of people, um, that, that, um, that share those same feelings. So I think those are all great conversations. So I think I'm, I'm clear on, on what I can do, or what you all want to do. And so when we meet again, uh, before we make the recommendations, we'll compile everything. We'll say, hey, this is what we got out of that meeting. Is this what you're thinking? Uh, and move on from there on permitted uses. Excellent, excellent. Okay, so community value nuisances. Um, so we've talked a great deal about nuisances. Um, I think we all can agree that si-, or sound is a nuisance. Smell, um, uh, uh, light can be a nuisance, uh, vibration can be a nuisance, uh, dust, particulate matter can be a nuisance. Uh, those things we can all agree on. And council's going to have a great conversation with the chief, uh, and, and code enforcement on what constitutes a nuisance, all right? So that's going to be duly dealt with. To the reasonable per, reasonable person, what is a nuisance, all right? So some things, though, require a little bit more talk, like community values, and we've, we've talked about a couple of them. Uh, one being a curfew, uh, one being loitering, uh, camping in public, um, are three of them. I have a list of several others, um, but, but those are kind of things that we want to talk about. Um, and so again, this is a conversation, it's a discussion. No right or wrong answer, uh, but we just need to have the conversations about them, so we can make an informed, uh, statement to, uh, city council.
I've got an opening question. What is considered loitering?
Some, some, uh, cities have passed ordinances that says you can't stay in a particular location for a certain amount of time. It's not a state law. I'm sorry. It's not under the Texas Penal Code for loitering, but there have been some cities that have passed ordinances that says you can't hang out in a specific location for a certain amount of time or an extended period of time, sir. But that would be an example of, of what, uh, community value would be.
Do you know about the length of time most of them are? Is it hours or days or?
There's more. I'm, I'm not familiar with any city that has a loitering anymore. They, they were, back in the 60s, there were a lot of people that were arrested for loitering. Um, panhandling, uh, normally the way we enforce it is if you solicit from a roadway, if you're not permitted, if it doesn't meet one of the exceptions under state law, you can't step into a roadway with traffic and, and ask for items.
We have pet in the road then? And we have pet in the road in city ordinance?
Panhandling, we enforce that.
Pet in the road, though, we have that already on the, pedestrian?
Yes, pedestrian, road. Yeah, that's, that's under state law. Yes, sir.
Maybe that's a topic we don't need to deal with, since it seems, what we're trying to get our hands around is covered by several other laws already.
Yes, that's correct. Uh, again, you can, there's some things you can be more restrictive. That was one of them. If it's not an issue, then we, we won't, we won't take it up.
If we could then, if I could just ask a question, Chief. So speak to curfew a little bit and what we're trying to, what cities try to use that for as far as, I mean, is this just controlling the youth, or?
It's exactly what it is. It's a nighttime, well, we have two types of curfews. We have a park curfew, and we, we close our parks at 10 o'clock at night until 6:00 AM. And that's irregardless of what your age is. And then we have a daytime and a nighttime curfew for, for 17-year-olds and below, so that during school hours, uh, during the daytime, they can't be out unless they're with a parent. And at nighttime, depending on the day of the week, they can't be out without a parent or, or a guardian also. It's just a, uh, gives the law enforcement an effective tool to, to cut down on, on mischief. My parents said nothing ever happens good at 2:00 AM, so there's no reason for you to be out at 2:00 AM. And that, that, that curfew goes on, along with that and gives us something to do.
Are there any current exceptions to cur, the curfew that are common, like coming home to or from work or anything like that that are?
Yeah, we, we, we try to use some common sense on that, and, and, you know, if, if they're, if they're coming home from Walmart on a shift, we're not going to, uh, give them grief about curfew, but if they're, if they're walking in between houses.
Right.
So there, there's got to be some discretion and some common sense that's applied.
What are the current curfew or limits on, like, uh, businesses? And I'm, I'm, I'm going back to our, our communities here, where if I'm, if I'm operating, you know, repair, can I be doing that at 10, 2:00 in the morning, midnight? What, what does that, do we currently have a cutoff or something like that?
What are the con- The, like, construction hours and stuff? Is that what you're talking about?
Well, like-
The construction hours would have hours which you can have higher threshold levels.
Yes.
And it's seven to-
Seven to seven.
Seven to seven.
Well, seven to nine. We actually have a completely-
Yes.
At one place it's seven to nine.
I, in, in this, in the spirit of looking at, you know, zoning and moving things around, what, what I'm getting at is, are there, are, could or should there be different curfew levels for different areas? So if you're operating, you know, inside of P4, changing tires and stuff like that, could you do that all the way up till 7:00? Or would we want to, you know, make it 6:00? Or if you're in P5, would you want to, or EC, could you be doing that until 9:00 PM?
If they're not a nuisance, why do we care?
Well, we're discussing nuisances. We have to, what's what we're discussing is how to set that nuisance, so that's exactly what we're talking about, trying to figure out.
You, you're talking about setting a curfew on business operating hours?
Well, mostly on like, we're talking about nuisance, so in this case it'd be noise, right?
Right, right, right.
So I'm using the example of the, you know, of doing auto work in a, in a P4 where next door, my next door neighbor is, you know, putting the kids down for the night, or, you know, getting ready to go to bed themselves. Is that different than an auto repair in an employment center? Or maybe they could work a little later, because they're not bothering people, you know?
Well, what if they're, so what if they're operating completely inside, I guess? Like, does that matter?
The nuisance, then, that's, the nuisance doesn't-
So right now, uh-
Well, I shouldn't say that, because if they're inside, just because they're inside doesn't mean they're not creating-
Yeah, so the noise is 7:00 to 7:00 in one place, 7:00 to 9:00, so for, uh, discussion's sake, um, we'll get to, to how it's, um, uh, implied or, um, used here in a second. But do y'all have a, a recommendation on which is more appropriate for normal, you know, elevated decibel? Is that 7:00 to 7:00, or is that 7:00 to 9:00? Um, I will tell you, it makes a, it makes a big difference, uh, during the summertime and wintertime. You know, 7:00 in the winter, or, you know, it's dark. 9:00, it's dark. 9:00 in the summer, it's perfectly light outside. Yes, please.
So when I go to council on Tuesday, one of the recommendations that we're going to say is that we change the definition for daytime, that it's, it's similar with other state law, traffic law, hunting law, and it's half hour before sunrise to one half hour after sunset. That way you have, you have the value of life. It doesn't matter what the season is, and it seems to be applicable. Um, as, like, like, uh, Mr. Jones says, right now, at 9:00 in, in, in the winter, it's been dark for quite some time. In the summer, we're, we're going on 8:30 right now, and there's still plenty of daylight outside. So it would seem more apropos for me to mow my yard today, you know, as long as I'm on the daytime, uh, definition that we're talking about, uh, changing to and bringing to council as opposed to what we have on the books right now.
So, so I guess what I'm asking is, should we just have that citywide? Or should there be something different for, say, like, an employment center where nobody lives? There's nobody trying to go to sleep, there's nobody trying to put their kids to bed, to bed or have dinner. You know, would it make sense that those businesses could stay open a little later and, and continue working if they needed to? That's, 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 that's what I'm asking, is whether it's a, it's a blanket, you know, noise, noise ordinance, or in areas where there are no people living or that would be bothered by it, we allow people, you know, businesses to work later, get more done?
So for example, like your, your Walmart and, and things of that nature, and they operate all the time. Uh, like a call center, they could operate 24 hours a day. You wouldn't hardly know it.
Well, Walmart has an automotive wing.
Mm-hmm.
So if overwork, um, and there's houses behind that, so that might be a bad example. But if there weren't houses behind Walmart, should Walmart be allowed to stay open till 10, 11 o'clock at night, changing tires, doing oil and stuff like that for people that work all day long, or should they shut down?
I don't think currently we regulate it, and I don't know of any 24-hour, uh, auto shops in town. Uh, also during the research, uh, Chief wasn't able to find any curfew that regulates business hours like that.
I'm not so much regulating hours as much as nuisance items.
Nuisances are 24 hours a day. So you can regulate those 24 hours a day, 7 days a week.
It's just a matter of setting that threshold.
That's correct. So 30 minutes before to 30 minutes after. Well, I think to Chief's point earlier, what does it matter if it's a business or if it's somebody else? It's universal. If it's a nuisance, it's a nuisance.
What about the, uh, I mean, just the general idea we spoke about earlier, that, I mean, you buy a house down, you buy, you rent out a flat downtown next to a restaurant that's going to have music on the weekends, that you kind of, it's just going to happen. I mean, to some extent, I mean, you know, it-
I think we're talking about two different things, which last, and one is if it's in a business area and they're working all night, they're working on cars all day and, or an all-night 24/7, who's going to complain on them? If it's not impacting a resident, and it's not impacting the other industry, then it's kind of like if a tree falls in the forest, does anybody hear it?
I, I don't, I don't disagree with, with that idea, but if somebody did-
Then we go back, it would be no different if it was daytime, because it's, the only difference changes is right now, the way the ordinance is written is that for residential and non-residential, the max threshold for decimal leaders is 85 decimals. At nighttime, it's 80. And that doesn't matter if it's at 2:00 in the di, in the morning. The only change is the five decimal giveaway, if you will, so.
That's what we're proposing?
That, that's what's on the books right now, and that's what we're proposing to keep.
Okay, so, so we're, we're not proposing different thresholds for the areas, just different decimals at different times?
Correct.
You good with that?
Yeah, I mean, that's the fact of the matter, it's the same thing.
So as Chief explained, are, are y'all okay with, uh, the different curfews that we have on the books?
Yes.
Okay. Excellent. Uh, loitering, moot point, uh, camping. I'm glad to have an expert.
Outside. Sometimes for hours at a time. Um, make them that. Don't have never confronted anybody that I know of, but can be kind of, by their appearance and their stance, can be kind of off-putting. Um, can I ask them to move along? I want-
So, so the way we handle that right now, ma'am, is we do it under criminal trespass warning. So if I'm the owner of a property, um, if I own Walmart and I don't like people that wear white sweaters today, I can trespass everybody that wears a white sweater if I chose to. And if you returned on the property, you'd be in violation of the, of the statute for criminal trespassing. So the same can stand if you have somebody that's, for whatever the reason is, is undesirable, and you don't want them on your property anymore. You, uh, you ask them to leave. If they don't leave, then you call the police. We'll ask them to leave in our presence. And if they don't leave, then they're committing a crime, and we can give them a warning that says you can no longer come back on this property. And as long as you are the owner, or you have what's called effective consent from the owner to control who comes on the property and who does not come on the property, that is, that's how we, that's how we control that now. And that is what the change has been since I've been in law enforcement since 1986. I have never filed a loitering case in my career, because it's, 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 it's gone to trespassing, yes.
What, what about those that are, that are public? So for, and, and the only reason to ask is, with P5 core, we're talking about higher density zero lot line where we have white sidewalks. So maybe I have a business and, you know, these high school kids on a summer, you know, 5, 6:00 PM, or, you know, they're just hanging out from my business, they're just going to their customers, but they're on a public sidewalk.
Somebody, somebody owns the sidewalk.
Well, the city owns the sidewalk, so it's public property.
Well, then, then they're allowed to be on the sidewalk, but the moment they come off the sidewalk, then, then-
That's what I'm talking about. We're on a zero lot line, where you have the business in front of the building, and then it's the sidewalk. So if my business is here, zero lot line, and teenagers are hanging out in front without, without a loitering ordinance, summertime, 5, 6 o'clock in the afternoon, there's nothing you can do to help that business owner out.
That is, that is correct.
So I guess your question would be changed, depending on where you work.
Yeah.
So, and my, my, my point for that is that we're, we're trying to push the higher density zero lot line, no gaps in there, which means we have wider sidewalks, more places to hang out, if there's a pizza place next door.
So there's, there's 31 flavors of ice cream, there's 31 different ways you can skin a cat, right? So if they're blocking or obstructing a passage way, and they're so bundled up that people can't walk by, we can take enforcement action that way. If they're standing in front of the shop and they're using profane language, they're creating, uh, a disturbance to the peace, there are ways that we can do that. But just by their presence, just standing there and converting oxygen to carbon dioxide, no, they're, they're not doing anything wrong. And then the question would be, why would we even want to encounter those people and, and, and have that? But if they're gauging activity that is not, not conducive to what we want, there's a good probability that they're, they're violating some, some law or statute.
Okay, thanks. Any more questions? Next, Matt?
Talking about camping.
Camping, yeah, let's talk about it. What do you want to talk about?
Just not allow it.
Not allow it? Okay, what about as a part of a special event permit?
Fine.
Fine, okay.
Yeah, in a park or anywhere.
Public places.
Is that what Doug's name for camping, or you got a special permit?
Parks.
Parks.
I guess I'm trying to think of where else.
Parks close at 10:00.
Yeah, we got, we got, could you not have a permit, though, for an event?
With a special event permit, yes.
Right.
Right.
So is that going to include, like, on Thanksgiving when people line up at Best Buy for the big deal? Is that considered camping?
Well, Best Buy's not, well, it's a public space, but it's a private property. Um, so I don't think that's what we're talking about. Um, and I, I don't know that anybody regulates that, like Best Buy staying overnight to buy goods and services. I, I think it drives, uh, economic development and tax generation, and if they want to come line up at all our stores for one night, I think that's great.
Where else, other than a park, would camping occur?
Well, as a code, so a, a, as it comes to this code, uh, parks, as we traditionally think about them, are going to be a little bit different. We're going to have smaller pocket po, pocket parks, uh, in different smaller civic spaces. Uh, so, you know, in like a, a downtown or- Uh, so, you know, in like a downtown or even a neighborhood, for example, you might have like a little internal park that, you know, fronts in, and it, it may not be a park per se, but it might be open space. So, yes, it's a park for namesake, but it's not how you would generally think about it.
If somebody wants to, they don't have a place to sleep and they want to sleep on the bench out here, is that camping in public?
Yeah, if they're sleeping overnight, I, I do believe by definition that, that would be that, what we're talking about, also.
But they can sit there and stay awake all night?
Yeah.
So long as they're just taking up oxygen?
Chief, what's the current ordinance that we have on camping in public?
I believe it's allowed by, uh, special event.
Special event permit only. There is no camping in public spaces without a permit.
That's correct.
Just how I think it should say. I mean, there's, there's no, there's-
We're cool with it.
I don't see a reason to camp in a pocket park or, you know, in a, in a town square type area, it just doesn't-
Okay, uh, so another one, uh, this is kind of a fun one. Uh, animals and the cell of animals, um, you know.
Where's that?
It's not up there, but this is just, just one, for example. So, uh, when does it become a kennel? When does it become a problem? Is it a problem? If it's not creating a nuisance, do you care?
To the point I'm earlier, if it's not creating a nuisance, here's, I, the only thing I can think of would be smell or noise.
Okay, so if we can regulate that through nuisance, which we can, um, you know, but this is a, it's kind of a, one of those things. Some people regulate, you know, chickens, some people regulate, you can only have three dogs.
Don't mention chickens.
So, yeah, my bad. It's an unpopular term.
But, but, but at that, at that point, the nuisance still covers it.
That's correct. But I'm saying even above and beyond a nuisance, there are some municipalities who say you may only own three dogs. I don't care if it causes a nuisance or not. Three is the appropriate number of dogs for any one household to own. So do we want to go down that bridge? Are we good, as long as you're not bothering anybody?
Not unless we have a whole lot of extra resources we want to burn.
I don't believe we do at this time, sir.
We are, we are east of Austin.
Okay.
I do have a question.
Yes, sir.
It's about dogs and chickens, I guess.
No chickens.
My understanding, uh, if, if there is a kennel situation, can they, can they, is there gonna be a, I'll go back to setbacks, but can they have those cages up against their property line, which is as far away from their house as possible?
If it's not creating a nuisance, yes. But if it, if it is.
Temporary or permanent?
Uh, this will be permanent.
Permanent.
So like, so, you know, so you could go zero lot line then with, with kennels? Or any structure for that matter?
Uh, now that depends. Now, that, that's gonna depend on the buildability of it. So if you have a fire-rated kennel, then yeah. And in some place types, you could. But in some place types, like the P three, for example, does not allow zero, I don't think it allows zero lot line.
But you couldn't have a kennel in P, you couldn't, you couldn't have a business selling dogs in P three, though?
No, not in P three.
Did you just say P three, or did I miss?
I did, but I was thinking more of a residential kennel. Yeah, so-
I'm thinking more from the commercial aspect.
From the commercial aspect, you couldn't have it, um, unless it's a P four and it doesn't create a nuisance. But to be on a zero lot line, it would have to have literally a fire-rated wall. So the building codes are gonna dictate that those are set back, and then the nuisance regulations will regulate smell, noise, and those things.
To your point, I'm thinking like, if you have a bunch of like temporary cages, those aren't structures, they could sit up against the fence if they wanted. If they, you know, put in a concrete runner, you know, metal post and everything, it's, it's there and it's going nowhere, that would be worth like a setback, I think, kind of to your question.
We'd still regulate it from a nuisance standpoint.
Okay.
Okay. So I think we're pretty good on that. So bottom line is, y'all think we're doing a pretty good job of regulating these types of things and keep on keeping on. I like it. All right, so accessory dwelling units. So this is one of those issues that, you know, in a P three, you can have, um, you can have a, a primary residence, you can have an accessory dwelling unit. But can you have eight accessory dwelling units? Do we care how many you have, so long as you can meet building separation, fire code, et cetera? So that was one of those conversations council asked you all to have. Uh, what is the appropriate amount? You know, the question, what, some, some question came up, well, the, the accessory dwelling unit has to be behind the primary unit. You know, but what if I own the property and I'm aging and I want to build something for myself? Like, which, which, which came first, right? The, the chicken or the egg? So, uh, those are kind of the things they wanted y'all to talk about. Do you just regulate through impervious cover? You know, so if, you know, there's a certain amount of building area, you're not allowed to, to go over that. So kind of what's appropriate? You know, so those are the types of conversations we'd like to, to have with you concerning accessory dwelling units.
Now, let me, let me jump in this one for the opening round. As a former Austin resident, impervious cover is a nightmare. Do not touch that subject. The number of units-
Yeah, we're gonna touch that.
Because nobody can agree on how to measure it.
Yeah, we're gonna touch that subject.
As far as the number of units and how to do it, um, everybody's gonna have a different size primary dwelling, different sized lots. You've mentioned that we've got the building codes, they're gonna tell us what we have to have for setback on the rest of it. I'd like to put a suggestion out there that your auxiliary dwelling units cannot exceed more than twenty percent of the primary unit. If you want to make two small ones, fine. You want to make one large one, but you, here.
Gross or each one individually? So if I have a, if I have a thousand square foot house, I can have a two hundred square foot accessory building and one only? If I live on an acre lot?
Yeah, if you've got a five thousand square foot house.
One thousand.
One thousand square foot house, yeah.
And I live on an acre.
An acre, you could add, yeah.
I could have one, two hundred square, okay?
I disagree.
Or two one hundreds.
No, what I, what I was saying is, your total number of buildings can't exceed more than twenty percent of your primary dwelling.
So you could do-
The, the total square footage of the buildings.
Right, so you could see it. So in your example, with an example, if it's a thousand square feet, I have two hundred square feet. I could do one two hundred, I could do two one hundreds, I could do four fifties? Right, okay, I just make sure.
Okay.
I got a thought on that. I, I, that's one way to do it. Uh, what I've seen people more often is what they call a Florida area ratio. That involves the site, and so if you have a very large site, you can put a limitation of forty percent. And that would, and impervious cover is something you want to talk about, but that would limit the amount of dwelling that could happen on that site. So I think if the site's smaller, it's gonna be a lot less. If it's larger, it's gonna be a lot more. And then how they wanted to divide that up would kind of give them that flexibility to do that.
Yeah, I think that's a good, good, good idea, good alternative to what I've got. It's, because it allows flexibility to the owner, but it, it does put some restriction on them so they can't just go completely crazy. And it gets them some restriction. Like I said, we've got the other building codes that'll say, you know, the rest of the requirements, your setback and stuff you have to do.
So you're talking from a Florida area ratio, though, not impervious cover?
Well, yeah, I think it's a little bit of both, um, because if you have, um, you say impervious cover's forty-five percent and your house is already so much, you have to factor in all of that. It's a, it's a kind of a math problem. But it gives guidance to the people doing the development that if they know this is a ratio for this neighborhood because there's more density desired, but then there's a more rural area and they want, they don't want so much density, they, we can, we can change the percentages that way versus just putting it on the building itself.
So kind of go with, for P one, we have one ratio, P two, we have another ratio, P three, we have a different ratio?
Yes, I would agree that that's the best way.
So what, specifically, what's the difference of Florida area ratio versus impervious, impervious coverage?
So if you have a, you can put a taller, so impervious cover is gonna be just ground level, flat. Doesn't matter how tall it is. Florida area ratio means you could still get some, uh, volume, but maybe yours, your taller. So you stack your floors up, and, and then you, you calculate all of the stacked floors, and they cannot exceed forty percent of the site.
Okay, so, so the sites, you know, we always get into math and get into trouble, but, so you build a structure, you've got a roof. That's obviously our impervious coverage. What you're saying, if you have then five stories underneath that once, that one thousand square foot roof, you've got five thousand square feet of floor, then that relates to the square footage of the lot.
If the height allows for it, then-
Yeah, if the height allows for it, but then that, then that's according to the lot size, whatever ratio. If you've got five thousand square feet under this one thousand square foot roof, but yet you're on a ten thousand square foot lot, you're a fifty percent.
Yeah, I think that's it. We want to set, you want to set the percentage based on the size of the lot and not the building. That's my biggest point on it.
I, I would say that my, my question was gonna be, do we count ADUs that are on top of a garage, for example? Like, I have a garage, I like to knock it down, build the garage with ADU on top of it, doesn't change impervious cover. You know, does that, does that count?
Well, my other concern is, is, you know, just that we do want smaller lots, we want, um, people to be able to use them. I mean, if you're, if you're on a thousand square foot lot and you want to build a thousand square foot house, you know, if it aligns, it fits with, I mean, maybe this is where the conversation of P one, P two, P three works because you can only have that in P four, P five. But, you know, you develop the whole thing rather than having some ratio where you have to create some green space, you know, where you should be able to develop all thousand square feet of this thousand square foot lot.
Matt's doing thinking or calculator.
Yeah, so I'm trying to, trying to give some guidelines here. So, for example, in the P three district, the building types that are allowed are really only what you would consider like a traditional house. So you can't have like a zero lot line. So by default, we're already kind of regulating the, the types of, of buildings that you could build from a complete build-out standpoint. So you could not have like a zero lot ADU, um, in a P three. It has to be set back, what mean, which means it has to be building code. So you could not have that, that, it's called edge yard. If you'll go to page ninety-eight, if y'all brought your packets or your books from the, from the B three code, it's on ninety-eight, and it kind of explains that. But I think Florida area ratio is a good way to, to handle it, um, could be appropriate. Uh, I do know that coun- uh, council has already had conversations on height, and in no situation are they comfortable over five stories, and that's only in the most intense districts.
But we're like twenty-seven or something like that.
I think somebody slipped up, slipped up and said that, and then he's been, he's been ridiculed ever since.
And I, and I get that, that was more just an idea of understanding.
And I think in, uh, residential, um, it's no more than three. Is that, am I representing that correct? Yeah, I think it's three.
And, and the International Building Code actually regulates, um, for residential, you can't be over three stories.
There you go. Um, also, when we're talking about this, um, the International Fire Code, uh, once you trip, it's either, I think it's two or three, I'd have to go back and look. But once you trip two or three ADUs, then you have to provide like fire lanes and something like that. So again, it's also dealt with in that part of the code.
Area, um, are you talking about the ADUs not exceeding a certain percentage or?
Total living area.
Totally, well, what if your, your main, your main residence is three, three stories? You would take the percentage of the lot that, with the main, the main building also, or is it just the ADUs?
So if, if, if in that scenario, you have a large house and, and the lot is small, then-
Or a large house and a large lot, yeah.
Oh, well, that, that would give them more, more room because if you have, so I think this is what this does. It keeps the scale of the character of the neighborhood about the same. So if this neighborhood, and this is what they would figure it out, decide, you know, this neighborhood, we want it not so dense, so they're gonna limit, they're gonna turn their percentage down. Then if somebody wants to have a grand flat or a mother-in-law, and they're allowed to do that, then they're gonna have to trade off some of their living space, or they're gonna be limited. And that, that gives them that pool set to do that with. But if you have a large lot and, or we're downtown, we want a higher density, then we can change the percentages up. That would give them more room, and then I do think, you know, we want some kind of green space. So they would have to factor that into their decision, and that would mean they're gonna go up, but then they're limited by height.
Okay.
So I think Florida area ratio is a common way that's done around. And that, that would be my vote because it's based on the size of the lot and then back to your-
I like that because it's proportional to each property. Um, it, it's almost like a sliding scale that, that moves, and to your point, kind of, um, protects the character of, of that neighborhood. So I think that's a, that's a good way to do it.
The last thing I'll throw into this is, um, to think about adding a tent, uh, from the sides of the lot because, you know, you could have a very tall structure, very next, well, very tall, but a taller structure, even under the height limits, right next to a, a smaller house. So if you, if you, if you put a tent in that where you go forty-five, after so many feet, turn it at forty-five, and then they have to fit everything under that little tent, it kind of helps in, in more to keep that character a little better.
This is a suggestion. So then along with this, and we're not worried about the size of the accessory, it could be as big as it wants, so long as it fits within-
Because I think if you regulate it that way, it, it would be proportional to the lot, so if you have a small lot-
Or you can have as many as you want, as long as it fits.
As long as you don't do that, uh, and maybe you can have a lot. And if, if it, if it can, if your lot can handle several of them, as long as it's proportionate and it feels okay, and we can regulate building and life safety, is that an issue? No? Excellent. I, I think it's great.
Well, I think we need a little guidance on-
I thi- and no, we will. I think it's a, it's, um, it's the recommendation. We'll go in and play with some numbers, and I would certainly want Matt Lewis and Milisoff to weigh in on that because they probably have some thoughts on that, on how it interacts with the place types and building types and patterns. But I think at the end of the day, it's probably a good, good way to do that because then it does, um, regulate not so many number or anything like that, but whatever naturally makes sense, uh, on that specific lot. So I think we can, we can tweak it, um, see, see how it works in some different scenarios and place types and, and go back from there. And if we think it'll be a problem, we'll bring it back and talk to you, but I, I don't foresee, uh, any issue with it.
I'm assuming when we say auxiliary, auxiliary dwelling units, we are not including detached garages?
A detached garage, if it has a living unit above it.
Then it would be.
Yes, sir, that's correct.
But if it's just a garage, then it's not.
If you're just parking, if you're putting lawn equipment, if it's, it's, it's habitable space versus uninhabitable. So if it has a kitchen, restroom, and sleeping quarters, that's a dwelling unit. You can have a restroom or something in a garage, but, you know, there's no kitchen and there's no, you know, so that's not-
So the garage structure itself doesn't, doesn't affect the, the formula, but if we throw a, we throw- Is that, is that part of the-
It, it affects your availability to have one.
Right.
But it would not, it, it would not on its own count as that.
If the, if the impervious cover of that one thing, if you go up, right, you're, you're not, your, your lot's essentially the same. Nothing's changed, so does that count?
It, it depends on the rest of the structures. It's really, it, it depends.
It's a little complicated, but, uh, what it means is, a lot of people convert their porches later on-
Right.
To a, a room or a garage into, they do a garage conversion.
Right.
What we want to do is keep the volume of, of, of the floor area ratio proportionate to the size of the lot. And, and it doesn't matter if it's conditioned space or not.
Why would be the question? Because, because in my, in my mind, it's, in my mind, right, it's volume. So if it's going above a garage, it's already in existence. You're not really changing much.
The biggest thing Florida ratio regulates is the volume and the size so that the character of the neighborhood, you don't have a, a really big volume that they built to them.
Think about it as a density of, like downtown, for example. You wouldn't want every lot to have these three-story, uh, living units, three-story accessory dwelling units, three-story this.
And like the McMansions in Austin.
Yes, and so you're, you're, to his point, you're regulating a volume, so it's not, doesn't feel like you're walking down a built downtown with, is, is that a fair way to put it?
Protects the character of the neighborhood.
Exactly. So it doesn't prohibit it, but it would- So it doesn't prohibit it, but it would count against your already built area. So if you're, if you have a two-story garage, I guess you could convert it, if, if you could convert a two-story garage, right, because it's already there. But if you already have, you know, a two-story garage, a three, a two-story house, you want to add on top, then that garage would then start affecting your ability to have that ADU without converting existing volume on your site.
So just, and I don't really get a specific for it, but so residential areas, P3.
Yes.
You know, we do want higher density, we don't, we aren't creating like minimum lot size standards or things like that, but, so and without necessarily looking at the setbacks and everything, but if it were feasible, we're basically saying that in some cases, you couldn't build a house. You couldn't fill it the way, the house would fill the entire usable space, but there might be a chance that you want to put a larger house on a smaller lot, wouldn't this would then step in and regulate that as well?
A larger house on a smaller lot?
Yeah, say, you know, you just want to build a primary structure, now you're talking about accessory dwelling units. But if the primary structure exceeds the same forty-three percent.
Well, that would be dictated by the place type.
That'd be impervious cover at that point, I believe.
In the building form. So that's already dealt with in the code.
Yeah, but there's, because the idea is create density, but this in, in its own would also help, at least decrease density to some point, depending on where the setbacks and everything else fell within there.
The code itself does that based off the building pattern within the place type and the building forms allowed in the place type. This would be a specific to, to accessory dwelling units.
I would say the only, the only other thing we would want to consider when we talk about, you know, fiscal stability and affordability, is that, you know, a, the more ADUs we have, the more areas we have, you know, more lower income housing we have available as well. So in an area where like you have like a P5, may not be a big deal, because, you know, when you talk about walking through like a little down, you know, built up downtown, it's not really a big deal if that's the area you live in, you know, but that's different than a P4, P3. So.
But you're assuming I'm going to rent it out. What if I want my mom to live back there, what if?
Still affordable housing, because she doesn't have to go somewhere.
Well, it's attainable housing, so.
What's that?
It's, it's a, it's a flexibility in housing types, which is desperately needed in the city of Bastrop.
What I'm getting is, is not having just a, and maybe there are ways to do this, your Florida, Florida area ratio is different for P5 than it is for P4.
Yeah, we're talking about accessory dwelling units, so in a P5, that's just called multifamily, right? In P5, that's just called multifamily. Right, you can just have it.
I think the.
So.
Yeah, well, just to clarify that, that we're saying, what I'm saying is that as long as you're under the Florida area ratio, we're not putting a number as it's up there, number one, we're not limiting how many accessory dwelling units you have.
Right, but, but the ratio limits the amount of, by default, it limits the amount, I'm saying in an area like a downtown area, where, you know, you, the goal is higher density, we may want to have a different ratio allowing for, you know, may, maybe it's, you know, I do the calculation, and in, you know, P4, I got four hundred square feet, but I do that same calculation in P5, and I, I get six hundred square feet to build, because.
So again, in the P5, the, by default, the place type and the building types allowed will allow you to build a denser product and higher?
Right, but I'm, but we're not talking about new products, we're talking about ADUs. So if I have a, if I have a one acre lot in downtown, if I have a main house, you know, building four or five structures behind, doesn't make it a multifamily structure, those are all ADUs. Right? Because we're not, because, what's that?
What'd you say? Well, yeah, it is regulated by building code, but we're talking about an accessory dwelling unit as like a use.
Right, so, and I'm talking about allowing for greater density with that use in areas like P5 versus a P4.
So really, what you're talking about on the Florida area ratio, at the percentage, is, is it a P3 or P4?
It changes, it changes.
And in a P5, it's.
So in a, in a P5, I could build whatever I want residential, residential-wise?
Based on, yeah, with a height and building code, yeah.
Okay, even though there's already a house in existence on that piece of property?
If it's a P5, yeah, the building, this code allows you, like I said, it's the most intensive, you can have zero lot line setbacks, you can have, you know, a greater Florida area ratio based on the place type and the development pattern, that's allowed by RIT in P5. So if you go to the building yards, or the building types in, in the code, and you look at a commercial building, we have rear yards, and apartment buildings, we lay all of that out already contemplated within the P5 district, because it's allowed by RIT.
So I'm going to use the old Spring Street dental property, so it's got a house in the front, but it's got a large backyard, so if I want to go and put six hundred square foot units that are, that are basically studios, kitchen, bedroom, toilet, that's sectioned off, I could do that in downtown with, by default.
In P5?
Yeah.
I believe that's the case, yes.
Okay, so like zero restrictions on ADUs in P5 then?
That's correct.
That, then, perfect, then, that's what I was wondering, because I thought we were talking about having this ratio.
Limiting everything, every, yeah, no. Yeah, I see what you're saying.
So just one more on that, because I felt like I heard conflicting information. So house, ADUs, all count as part of the ratio? Like primary unit and all the ADUs are all part of the.
In P3.
But not for a brand-new structure, only for where a structure already exists?
No.
If it's an empty lot, then how can you have an, you can't build an ADU on an empty lot?
Well, if you built it, you could if you built it above your garage, for example.
Well, that's why I'm saying, well, you can't really separate it into ADUs and primary structures, because it's all part of the same equation.
That's right.
That figures it out.
That's, that's correct.
And the garage is also part of that equation without, without a dwelling unit? As far as impervious coverage is, so.
As proposed, it would be, yes.
So all the impervious coverage plus any additional living space that's not directly.
Yeah, so the conversation was, do we care? And how do we regulate it? So you didn't want to regulate by number, so if we just regulate the Florida area ratio in P3, and say if it's a two-story garage, if it's a two-story ADU, has a living unit on the bottom, living unit on the top, that's great, knock yourself out, so long as you don't impact the character of the neighborhood, I'm sorry.
But the Florida area ratio does not affect new construction?
Yeah.
If I have a, if I have an empty lot, we're using impervious cover to do that, not, not this, this other thing?
Really quickly, one more, maybe you got this answer, Pablo. So we talked about how the garage would change if you converted it to living space, right, but does it really? I mean, it still counts as part of the same. Say I want to build a two-story garage, right, but I'm not going to live in it, I'm just going to store lumber upstairs, because I have a little wood shop. You know, that doesn't necess, does that count as part of?
I, I thought the way that I understood it to.
It's volume.
The, the way that I understood it was that that's fine if you do that. But if you have the garage, and then you have the primary, and then you want a standalone accessory dwelling unit, all of the, so your garage counts at the forty, your primary, and then your new ADU would count towards the forty percent.
So, but a two-story unconditioned garage?
Yeah, that's just, that's going to be regulated through here.
Okay. Right, so we can't have one, I guess, then by.
So you can have it by RIT. And we're going to go back and work with this, and we might run into a hiccup, and Matt Lewis or one of the other people, they might know the answer to that, and so if we need to come back, we'll come back and have another conversation. Or is your recommendation that in a P3, probably shouldn't, no matter if it's new, if it's old, if it's accessory, if it's a dwelling unit, maybe it doesn't trip a certain Florida area ratio period, is that what you're saying?
No, no, I like the idea, I'm just trying to figure out what goes into the equation.
Gotcha.
Equals MC squared, but with some less complex calculations.
So if we're talking strictly ADUs, right, and I have a two-story garage, and I have a two-story home, and I come to you and I say, I want to have an accessory dwelling unit. At that point, I'm going to look at your two-story garage, and I'm going to look at your two-story, I'm going to say,
You have to propose the.
You're already at thirty-nine percent, you can't do that, however, you could do it if you convert the second story of your garage.
Because it's already part of the calculation?
Correct. So you could also come in and say, I have a two-story garage, I want to have two accessory dwelling units, a second-story one and a first-story one. And as long as you're under the forty percent, again, that's great, because we're not regulating number.
Do you have to have a garage?
No.
Are, are, the other thing that you had mentioned, are, are we saying that ADU should be behind the facade of the front of, of the main structure?
That's, that's a conversation to have. And it's a, it, it can swing both ways. I mean, if I'm on, again, we have a lot of different lot sizes in Bastrop, even in downtown. In previous lives, we ran into issue with, man, I have two acres. I have a house back here, why can't I build another house? I mean, if it, if it smells like a house, looks like a house, if it's primary or secondary, it doesn't matter.
I guess I go back to the, if I want to build three little two-hundred-square-foot huts in front of my main structure in my front yard, because I can, that would be an unintended consequence of that idea.
And that would also be regulated through the place type and, and the allowable building patterns.
Okay, so I look at it like this, that if, if your, if your lot's a certain size, then that, that facade requirement is a way.
So if I live in Hunter's Crossing, I have a twenty-five-foot front yard, can I come in and build a a two-hundred-square-foot tiny home in front of my house, is that what you're saying?
Kind of that idea, you know, if, if you have this, if you have the space and it's allowed, is that, is that what, you know, because that's not what when I think of, of our downtown area, when you drive through, I don't, I can't think of a lot of properties where you drive and, you know, it's, the main house is back here, and you have all these accessory dwellings up front. Unless somebody's got a good example that I'm, I'm not thinking of, but I can't think of any in this area where, where, you know, it's, it's just like this tiny, tiny structure compared to like the house that's right behind it.
Well, what, okay, well, what if it's not a tiny, tiny structure, what if it's a structure that?
So then we could say, if you're going to build in front of the facade of the main structure, then we put a minimum requirement, minimum size requirement on it. Which is what, which is what it's been in the passcode, which I never liked that you had to have a minimum of a thousand square feet, you build a structure. But if we're going to the front of the facade, that's where you, that's where you keep, you know, that's where you can have a three-thousand-square-foot hut in the back.
So there are requirements on how much building frontage you have. So if it's, if it's meeting the minimum requirements for a primary structure, does it matter if it's the first or second home on the lot?
No.
Okay, so that is, that is regulated through these codes. So how your, your, your home sits on the lot is regulated, so if that, if that secondary or additional building meets our regulations of the primary structure, is that okay?
So would a two-hundred-square-foot structure meet that?
As a secondary one? I don't know that it would, because it, it, it relates on how it interacts with the public realm and with the street. So I'd have to, that's a good question, and I'll, and I'll ask it and get an answer.
My, my thought is the unintended consequence of having a.
I understand.
Having a house, and I don't, I'm not talking about an acre lot on, you know, the north side of town.
Yep.
I'm talking about something, you know, down here in this area where we're at right now, where, like, hell, I could, I, I have forty feet from a house, I could pop up, you know, six little huts, and, you know, rent them out to people that are, you know, visiting, or, you know, I could rent them out by the month, you know, or something like that, and then all of a sudden, we, we we're driving down our historic streets, and, you know, we have these, you know, huts here and there that are kind of sporadic and not behind.
So on the, on the twenty-second, Matt Lewis will be here, and we'll have an answer by then. Excellent. All right, so we'll tinker with this, I think it's a great suggestion, we'll look at it. Again, we might kind of circle back to some of these as needed. But that's all, that's all we have, the three to talk about tonight. So looking back at the schedule, on the twenty-second, Matt Lewis will be here, we'll talk about tree preservation, street sections, and signage. So if you want to brush up on those before you come back on the twenty-second. Yes, ma'am? Is that in the morning?
Eight-thirty.
Yes, ma'am. Yeah, I will.
And coffee.
And coffee. Now you're pushing it. No, yeah, we'll, we'll provide some, we'll provide some refreshments, it won't be Starbucks, I promise you that, but yeah, we'll provide something, that's fine. And also, yeah, and also, this Saturday, it's our pop-up event. I think it was brought up at the, the joint session, but we invite you all to come. Staff is going to be there at the kind of information hub, as well as some different locations. And please come out, if anything else, to take a look at the Main Street project and, and how these codes are going to kind of come to life and, and use that rehabilitation of Main Street as a kind of a catalyst. But I'll also have a lot of good information on the code. We'd welcome you all to come in and, and have conversations with people at the, the hub, and hopefully some of you all can make it. What's the, the name of the, the, kind of the shared workspace? It's like a shared workspace right now, what's it called? We'll send you the. Used to be a bookstore, we'll shoot you the address of it this evening.
Nine thirteen Main.
Nine thirteen?
Nine thirteen Main.
Nine thirteen Main. It's from nine AM to two PM. There will be refreshments there, there's a donut truck coming in that serves all kind of crazy, like fancy donuts and stuff, it's going to be really fun. So we'll have the street trees, we'll have music vendors, we'll have a place for the kids down at the park on the south side of Main Street, and really going to be a good deal, so I hope you all can make it out. And that's all I have, ma'am.
Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Yes, all, second, third, fourth, fifth.
Anyone oppose, do it during, stay here.
Thank you all.